In response to the executive orders issued by the Governor of the State of California, the following meeting of the Board of Education at the Delmar Union School District, being conducted in person following all current health regulations and effective time of meeting. Item 1.1 is called to order in open session. Open session of the April 27, 2022 Governing Board of Trustees Meeting is called to order at 4:00 PM. Item 1.2 is public input concerning other than closed session agenda. Is already in public? Okay. Item 1.3 is adjournment to closed session. The Board will meet in closed session to consider the following matters. 2.1 Congress for Legal Counsel: Existing Litigation, Government Code Number 54956.9A. One matter as identified on the agenda. 2.2 Congress for Legal Counsel: Existing Litigation, Government Code Number 54956.9A. One matter as identified on the agenda. 2.3 Conference of Labor Negotiator, G C 54957.6. One matter as identified on the agenda. 2.4 Congress for Legal Counsel: Pending Litigation, Government Code Section 549569D1. One matter as identified on the agenda. 2.5 Congress for Legal Counsel: Pending Litigation, Government Code Section 54956.9D1. One matter as identified on the agenda. Board will now adjourn to closed session at 4:02 PM. By law and law policy, any member of the public may address the Board an agenda item or any non-agenda item, but the public must present a request to the Board. Therefore, I ask you to have a similar speakers of citizens time to help us run an efficient meeting. Speakers for non-agenda items need to be turned in prior to Item 4.2, hearing of the public regarding non-agenda items. If you recognize and call for voting at that time, then you have three minutes to address the Governing Board. For those individuals who wish to comment on a particular agenda item, your speaker slip will need to be turned in by Item 5.7, hearing of the public regarding an agenda item. You will be recognized and called for voting, and when the requested item comes up, you will have three minutes to address the Governing Board. Okay, 3.2 is report of action taken in closed session. 2.1, in closed session by unanimous vote, the Board voted to approve a compromise agreement and release with student in O A H case number 2021120128. The agreement includes special education services and attorney's fees in exchange for waiver of claims against the district. 2.2, in closed session by unanimous vote, the Board voted to approve a compromise agreement and release with student in O A H case number 2022030345. The agreement includes special education services and attorney's fees in exchange for waiver of claims against the district. 2.5, the Board was advised of communications that had occurred in the litigation involving the district called Save the Field versus the City of San Diego and the Delmar Union School District. The Board approved in closed session on a 5-0 vote this statement I am about to read, which will also be posted on the district's website. Delmar Union's voiced our Board of Trustees' statement to the community. The Board of Trustees was advised in closed session that members of the community have sent emails and letters to the judge in the case known as Save the Field versus the City of San Diego and Delmar Union School District. The judge contacted the districts, the cities, and the Save the Field's legal counsel to disclose the communications which are considered ex parte communications with the judge and are not proper. Our legal counsel has informed us that under the American Bar Association rules, a judge shall not initiate, permit, or consider ex parte communications or consider other communications made to the judge outside the presence of the parties or their lawyers concerning impending or impending matter. These types of communication were neither authorized nor cajoined by the Board of the District. The Board's request statement that no further attempts be made to communicate with the judge and that all such actions be immediately stopped. We understand that many people are frustrated with the delays that have occurred due to the litigation challenging the Delmar Heights rebuild project and the resulting increased costs. Both the litigation and the costs have impacted the project and our Delmar Heights reopening schedule. We appreciate the support the district has received in its efforts to move the project forward. With regard to the communication with the judge, it may have been thought that sending communication to the judge would let the judge know of the community's support for the project. These types of communications, however, are prohibited and can negatively impact the district or the ongoing litigation. Aside from the improper attempts to communicate with the judge, we have received allegations that some members of the community have sent letters and made threats to members of Save the Field, including calling their names, driving by their homes, and honking horns and attempting to annoy them at their house. We are asking everyone to maintain civility in their interactions and communications. We recognize that there will be differences in many issues. However, we want to set a positive example for the children we educate. Please consider this request in your future actions and communications. Sincerely, the Board of Trustees of the Delmar Union School District. 3.3 is pledge allegiance. You will now welcome Dr. Mcclair to lead us in pledge allegiance.
Ready? Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's love to hear those small voices on that topic. For 3.4 is approval of the agenda, and I'd like to propose that we move Item 5.2 to immediately following this item so that we can hear the kids' presentation next and let them get on with their evenings. Is there a motion to approve the agenda without amendment? Yeah, listen, favor. Aye, close. Okay, the motion of the two for agenda was passed. So we will go to Item 5.2, which is the Board Report of the Delmar California Teachers Association with DMCTA President Kevin Kinnon.
President Halpern, member of the board, Dr. McClurg, founder. Good evening. During my two years serving as president of the Delmar California Teachers Association and one year as vice president, my philosophy has been one of building relationships and seeking compromise from both sides in an effort to solve problems collaboratively. Although at times it feels a little like I'm walking down the middle of a busy street trying not to get hit by either side. Sorry, lost my voice. I stand by the decisions I've made. I believe this approach has served our teachers, our students, and our community well. In a time of uncertainty and fear from the COVID-19 pandemic, it was relationships, trust, and compromise that helped us to reach an agreement that ultimately allowed us to open our schools when many could not or would not. I am very thankful to be coming out the other side of such a difficult and trying time. So here we are today facing a different, but not new, set of problems. Problems that previous presidents have tried to address and that I continue trying to address even now. In light of recent events and the abundance of feedback that I have received from individual teachers, DMCTA site representatives, and my executive board, I feel now is the time to get out of the middle of the street and pick a lane. I have put a great deal of effort into building relationships with our administration, and I value them very much. However, at a time like this, I have to appreciate the trust that has been given to me as president and recognize my responsibility to not just make decisions and address concerns, but to also be the voice of our membership. So here it is. First, we want to let our community know that we are grateful to you for your support. We have tried in many ways at many times to be heard. We appreciate that you are listening. Second, to our Board of Trustees, we conducted a climate survey in the fall of 2019. We presented it to our administration, and we met with you to provide further context to the results of the survey. We conducted another survey more recently, this time involving a subset of our membership. Both surveys point to problems that we are trying to address. If our efforts have not been sufficient to warrant your involvement in finding a resolution, we would ask that an agenda item be added to the next board meeting to discuss ways to collect authentic, honest, and valid feedback that can help guide your next steps. Lastly, to everyone here tonight, we are the teachers of Delmar. We are professionals. We are among the best around at what we do. We love our students, our schools, and our community. We recognize that Delmar Union is an exceptional place to work and go to school, and we are sincerely grateful for what we have here. We are the heart and soul of this school district, and we want to make it as beautiful on the inside as it is the outside. Now I'd like to change gears, and if we can, try to lighten the mood, only for a moment. Tonight, our site representatives from Sage Canyon, Michelle Chavez, and Gina O'Monte have prepared a little something that will surely bring us now to everyone's face.
And all votes are clear now. We're going to move to Item 4.1, which is correspondence. Good evening. The superintendent's office has received the following correspondence regarding district visits on key topics: The DMUSD Health and Safety Plan Code of Calls Guidelines for Practices, Delmar Heights School Staffing, Sixth Grade Camp, the COVID Dashboard Board Meetings, thanks for a wonderful year at DMUSD, and resources and support for Ukraine. That concludes the superintendent's correspondence. We are now at Item 4.2, which is hearing of the public regarding non-agenda items. We will now call members of the public who have requested to address their Governing Board regarding items that are not on the agenda. Members of the public who would like to address their Governing Board regarding an agenda item will be to complete and submit a speaker slip at this time. So we have 24 speaker slips, and we have to get a board agreement to go past 20 minutes of total comment. 24 speakers represents about an hour and 10 minutes of speaking. So we, of course, need to get a group from the board to allow for all the speakers to use the floor for that. Tom, you got your thoughts?
I'll move to extend the time.
Make those a favor. Aye. So we'll extend the time. Thank you all for coming. We really want to hear from all of you, and we appreciate your engagement. This is a thanks for public discourse and input. We want to hear what we all have to say. I just want to really ask that we all, you know, try to use our best civil behavior and avoid personal attacks and really let's all just take this in the spirit of learning improvement and really hearing from each of you. Hearing from each of you. We look forward to hearing from each of you. And if you also have heard this before, but if you have already heard someone's already made a point, you're welcome to just agree with a person before you or another person. You're welcome just to reiterate your agreement of that person. So that's my speaker slips. I'm going to call two of you at once, so just be prepared for the next person to speak. So first, I'll have Elena D., followed by Lori Carpenter.
Hi, my name is Elena Desparz, and I have been a special education teacher for 13 years. This is my ninth year in our district. I was very hesitant to speak tonight because of fear of retaliation, but I also think it is my duty to stand up for what is best for kids, especially those with special needs. There are many issues going on in our district right now, in both general education and special education. I would like to specifically address what happened with the VSI's as an example of how our district is broken. While I'm glad that the district received the layoff notice to the VSI's, I am disappointed in how the district handled the entire process. The public was provided 24 hours' notice for a special board meeting on budget division. Not only was the VSI presentation that was, that the Board requested not on the agenda, but as both Jenny Ha and Ryan Stanley said, the proposed cuts of this position were not budget-related. If this is the truth, then why was presented at this meeting? It is this kind of deception that needs to stop. We have an executive director of Student Services, Jenny Ha, who also oversees special education, who either does not know and has been informed about what school positions truly entail or knowingly spoke many of his truths of them. The number of his truths were shocking at best. This is not okay. The top-down management style needs to stop. President Halpern said, "The Board is permitted to ensure input and engagement for teachers, staff, parents, kids, and all stakeholders. We want to make sure that our district is operating at the highest standards." I am disappointed to share how one of the current Board members responded or was willing to meet with teachers to discuss the VSI positions when it was requested. Delmar is losing many amazing teachers and specialists. In the past two years, I personally know 12 staff who have already left our district, have resigned, or are looking for new jobs right now, even though the results are not okay. That should tell you something right there. I will leave you with one last quote from Dr. Brad Johnson. "Morale should always be a priority of every leader. When people feel valued, supported, appreciated, and that their strengths are being utilized, it improves engagement, job satisfaction, and overall sense of well-being. It's time to work together and fix what is broken. That is what is best for the students in our district and what they deserve."
Good evening. My name is Lori Carpenter, and I am currently an educational specialist teaching the Alternative Morning Grammar Class at Delmar Heights. I have been assigned to six of our eight schools in the past 20 years in several special education positions. I was the Delmar Heights in-district teacher in the year 2015-16. My purpose for speaking tonight is to thank many parents and staff who are here, and a special thank you to those of you who have chosen to speak up on behalf of Delmar Heights Special Education and the overall climate of our district. I would also like to thank the district and Board for rescinding the layoffs of the VSI's, but unfortunately not until after we lost our Delmar Heights motion to a VSI also. He was threatened with a layoff, and of course, he needed to do what was best for his family and move on. By the way, I would like to clarify some misinformation that I heard at February Board meeting. When asked if VSI supported Gen Ed students, no one spoke up with the truth. Yes, they did. I have been on the Heights Crisis Team interviewing for the Safety for All for the last four to five years. I'm not sure when that assignment started. As we know, there are no limitations as to who or who cannot have a behavior episode requiring multiple adults to respond. And despite the student's eligibility or ineligibility for special education, our VSI's were always requested to be present. Circling back to losing many staff members, these losses disrupt a school, a staff family, and in special education, our programs are disrupted. This has been a very disruptive year for our district and impacting the personal life of Delmar Heights. We lost our supportive and beloved principal. As I said, we lost our VSI, and our speech pathologist was involuntarily transferred halfway through the year. On top of all of this, the special education teachers and service providers are now involved in a uniform complaint investigation. If you can imagine the impact of all of this on me, let me share. I'm sad and miss our district that I love so much. I would like to share a quote from the most recent NEA publication that really resonated with me and is relevant to where our district is currently. "We need to change the idea that teachers should take on everything while being mistreated or disrespected just because we love being in a classroom or because it's what's best for our kids. Is it best for our kids to lose great teachers because that is where we are headed?" And that was a quote by Erica Seale, who's a special education teacher in California. "Board members, we've lost enough great principals, teachers, and classified staff already. Please put us on to it now."
Thank you for the reactions, but we want to keep this meeting moving, and you can't hear who I'm calling out, and I want to keep the comments coming. So Marian Mizel, followed by Chelsea Moore, followed by Allison Piper.
Hi, I'm your district leadership and board. I am Marian Mizel. I have been a speech language pathologist for 34 years, and I have served Delmar for the last 20. I came to the United States at age 16 from Iraq and understand the personal sacrifices we make to speak out against injustice. However, there is an Iraqi saying that states, "If you're already drenched, you might as well stand in the rain." We have a moral obligation in a functioning society to work collectively to resolve disputes in peace and stepping to the light. In gratitude, I stand here to hold space for all of those in the staff who are crippled with fear from coming forward. I believe this is a time that we can choose to heal with reconciling the truths of our educators and the image of the district. It is these educators who kept the schools open during the surmountable challenge of the pandemic and made the impossible possible. We held it together with humor, dedication, smiles, innovation, and perseverance. We are respectfully asking for truth, transparency, and respect. I want to thank the special education staff for their bravery in collectively and unanimously responding to a call of action and shedding light on the numerous unethical practices that place this district at risk. A heartfelt thanks for the parents for your involvement and realization that the climate of the workplace of the educators is foundational to the social and emotional educational well-being of their children. Leadership by definition cannot hold all the answers. If you seek to create a culture of good fits, you will lose the diversity that is bringing the creativity that is fundamental to innovation. We need radical change, and maybe all of us who take the risk to speak out and contribute when asked to stay silent are not troublemakers, but rather unrelenting optimists who choose excellence out of integrity. As you all know, work entrusted leadership and the functional performance of an organization are inseparable. We are hemorrhaging hope, and the innovative principle that educators are shutting down or leaving in larger numbers than ever. This is a crying shame. To be clear, kind, and concise, we are at a critical point that we can choose better. First, our immediate priorities are staffing and climate issues being addressed in a collaborative and meaningful way. Second, truth and transparency need to lead us into the future. At last, respect, we need to remember that no organization thrives from a top-down leadership follower model. Nothing is invented in a vacuum of voices. If we are expected to embrace the future, then let us be the change. Let us dare to lead, share the stage, and hold others to be stronger ourselves. Power is able to-
Please give 15 seconds to conclude.
And it should never be absolute or misguided. Thank you very much.
Welcome, Allison, welcome, Julie Marner, and Krista.
Good evening, President Halpern and members of the Board. I stand before you as a proud member of DMUSD's leadership team and the proud principal of Sigmar Ridge School. Though my time as a site principal has been brief, I have been part of the Delmar Union School District for the past eight years in a variety of capacities. During my time with the district, I have come to recognize a few distinctive qualities that set DMUSD apart and make it truly special. One of these qualities is nicely summed up by Brene Brown when she shares: Integrity. Choosing courage over comfort is choosing what's right over what's fun, fast, or easy. And it's practicing your values, not just professing them. When I think of this quote, it makes me think of the incredible ways this has been demonstrated throughout our district. When we embarked on District Design 2022, we embraced radical change and committed and acted on creating an extraordinary school experience for all children. When we commit to being student-centered, we truly ground every decision in doing the very best we can for kids. When we prioritize relationships and connection, we create spaces and opportunities for this to occur. These things don't just happen by chance. They happen by the intentional visionary leadership of Dr. McClurg. As I reflect on choosing courage over comfort and continually in awe the way she questions, surrounds herself with a variety of perspectives and stakeholders, listens and is genuinely curious. For example, just a few weeks ago, she was on our site providing opportunities for staff to meet with her to discuss a variety of relevant topics at a focus group meeting, investing time to be with our staff. When making decisions for our district, the conversation always is grounded in what's best for our students. This is not just based on what a feeling or opinion is, but based on what Dr. McClurg is seeing and hearing at our sites. Just a month ago, Dr. McClurg was at our school visiting classrooms, as she frequently does. At one point, I had to step out and support a student, and when I came back to the classroom, I found her on the floor engaging in accounting collection with second graders, laughing, asking questions, experiencing the learning at our site, investing time with our students. As a principal, I have felt connected and supported the past two years. Dr. McClurg is present, always open to phone call away, and always with a positive and joyful spirit. When I joined DMUSD eight years ago from a different district, I was struck by the sense of unity among all staff at every level. Though we might not always agree on every decision, there was a collective goal of giving everything we had to do right by kids. My hope is that we continue to lean into one another and remember why DMUSD is exceptional. It is because of the people and the stellar leadership of Dr. McClurg.
Go ahead, Al.
Good evening, President Halpern and members of the Board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Lately, I have read many generalized statements making claims about how large groups of people feel in our school district. I hope as critical thinkers, we are wary when we hear or read statements like "everyone feels" or "everyone thinks." So I'm eager to speak for myself and share why working in Delmar and with Dr. McClurg has been such a tremendous source of pride and joy in my life. Dr. McClurg has taught me what it means to lead with gratitude and integrity. She frequently expresses her own pride in our students, in our teachers, and our leadership team. She takes the time to be with people, to connect, to show that she cares, and hear their thoughts. Last week, she visited Sage Canyon's steam plus night. She probably could have been home having dinner- She probably could have been home having dinner with her own family. But instead, Dr. McClure is with our students, our teachers, and our community because she cares and because she shows up. Every time Dr. McClure comes to Sage Canyon, she asks, "How are people? How are the teachers? How are the students?" We walk through campus, we talk to kids, we talk to teachers because she cares and because she shows up. She cares greatly about our staff, our students, and teaching and learning in our classrooms. That's why she is present frequently and in tune and in touch with who we are as people, with how we lead as educators, and frequently reminds us to take care of ourselves so that we can do the best for students. Dr. McClure doesn't just talk the talk, she walks the walk, and I would always choose to work for her leader like that. Thank you. Julie Lerner, followed by Krista Bernstein and Andrea Sleet.
Good evening, President Halpern and members of the board. I'm standing here before you this evening because I felt compelled to make sure that I am the only voice who speaks for me. I'm speaking to you tonight as the longest-serving principal in the DMUSD site-based administrator team. I feel that my 29 years of experience in the field of education affords me the opportunity to stand before you with confidence when I say that Dr. McClure is the only Level Five superintendent that I have ever been fortunate enough to work for and with. A Level Five leader, according to Jim Collins in his research, "Good to Great," just lays a powerful mixture of personal humility and indomitable wisdom. Level Five leaders are incredibly ambitious, but their ambition is first and foremost for a cause, for the organization and its purpose, and not themselves. From day one, it has been clear that Holly has an unwavering focus on doing what's best for children, and from my experience, also taking care of the adults who serve them. Through the past 10 years, our district has progressed from really good to great. Thanks to the leadership of Dr. McClure, she leads with passion. She understands the importance of putting people first and strategy second, and she takes responsibility for the decisions she makes because she wants us collectively to provide the best possible educational experience for each one of our 3,955 students. In my career, I've worked in three school districts, and I have never worked with a superintendent who is more present than Dr. McClure. She regularly visits each campus because she wants to be where the learning occurs. She knows the names of our staff, she enjoys engaging in the teaching and learning that's going on, and she could not be prouder of our staff and students, as well as the joy they exude in our classrooms and out and about on campus. Dr. McClure is a Level Five leader who is responsible for our district's continued growth over time and the transformation toward ensuring we deliver an extraordinary school experience to all students. But Dr. McClure would never admit this. She is simply about doing what's best for children and giving credit to our district for our district's success to staff. In October of 2013, I came to the Delmar Union School District to serve as a site-based principal. I made the decision to leave my previous school district because I was looking to serve in this role in a district where the leadership's mission aligned more closely with my own beliefs: doing what's best for children and taking good care of the adults that educate them. I stand here nine and a half years later, grateful. Grateful because in my experience, I work for a superintendent that continues to make decisions in the best interest of the students and the adults that support them. Thank you.
Thank you. Krista Bernstein, followed by Andrea Sleet and Abby Tamingo.
Good evening, President Halpern, board members, Holly, and our cabinet. I'm here tonight to speak to my experience in Delmar as a new principal. When offered the position at Ocean Air, I had an incredibly difficult decision to leave the school that I loved. The deciding factors in my decision to join this team were many trusted colleagues who could speak to Holly's stellar leadership and the chance to work with a truly collaborative and connected team. My time here has been brief, but has surpassed my expectations. I have been energized by staff, a dedicated group who shows up to do what's best for students every day. I'm surrounded by colleagues who listen, provide me with feedback, answer my questions, and are always a phone call away when I need anything. Our leadership team guides us in meaningful work at every opportunity. I come to meetings as an active participant, learner, and leader. I am thriving in an environment with high expectations for all. I've never felt more heard, seen, or appreciated. I see decisions made in the best interests of students at all levels. How fortunate are we to get to be in a place that actually does the work others strive to? I want to thank the board for this opportunity, thank our cabinet for ongoing support and guidance, and thank Holly for truly inspired leadership.
Thank you. Andrea Sleet, then Rastus.
Good evening, President Halpern and our board of directors. I'm standing before you today to share how grateful I am to be a former teacher, parent, and current principal in the Delmar Union School District. I have been an educator and a leader in our amazing school district for 27 years. I am incredibly proud to be the principal of Delmar Hills Academy and a part of our incredible leadership team led by Dr. McClure. My 22 and a half years as a teacher were rewarding, inspiring, collaborative, and filled with opportunities to grow to be the best educator I could be for children. Because of our strong leadership at the site and district level, I was able to fulfill my passion to learn and grow into an educator that provided high-quality instruction, created meaningful learning opportunities, and facilitated a culture of thinking for students to thrive and grow. It is because of our leadership I was provided with many opportunities to serve on district committees, in a lead teacher role, to not only support my growth for my students, but to support others in the district. Because of our leadership, I always wanted to know more and never stopped learning. It is through these empowering and collaborative experiences that I was driven to become a principal in our district. For four and a half years, I've been part of a leadership team that can only be described as the very best. Integrity, passion, courage, strength, collaboration, and ambition are just- to be an administrator on our DMUSD leadership team and to be the principal of Delmar Hills Academy. Our leadership inspires and empowers me to be the very best that I can be, to support, bring joy, and enrich the lives of every child, teacher, staff member, and parent in my community. As Holly always says at the conclusion of our District Take-Two videos, "This is DMUSD, a great place to be," I say, "This is DMUSD, there is no place I'd rather be." Thank you so much.
Thank you. Abby Tamingo, followed by Rastus and Jason.
Good evening, President Halpern, board members, Holly, Megan, cabinet. As you know, I'm Abby Tamingo, and I'm a very lucky principal at Chori Hills. I say lucky because that's exactly how I feel. Lucky, fortunate, grateful, happy, and proud to be a principal in our district. I wanted to take a moment to speak for me and share my perspective of being in our district. I chose to work in Delmar almost 20 years ago as an instructional aide, even though I had my teacher credential. At the end of the year, I was proud to be hired as a teacher, and the luck came from finding this district in the first place. After two years of teaching, I left to go back to the East Coast, and within a year, I was on the phone asking them how I could apply to come back to Delmar. My experience as a teacher in a different district and as someone who provided professional development at districts across the country has illuminated how lucky, grateful, happy, and proud I felt to be a teacher in Delmar. When I felt I was ready to take the next step into administration, I was hopeful for a job here. I didn't want to look anywhere else. Luckily, I got one, and now, eight years later, I'm happier and prouder than I've ever been. I feel fortunate to have a leadership team that I feel valued and remember, that collaborates closely and pushes each other's thinking, but always there when you need them, and that always, no matter what, keeps kids at the center of decision-making. I personally appreciate that Holly, our cabinet, and our school board members spend so much time at our school sites and in our classrooms because they care. I appreciate how Holly invests in me and our leadership team invests in me in a variety of ways, like individual meetings, goal settings, bringing in leadership discussions and learnings to our meetings, and providing meaningful deep feedback that's helped me grow into the leader that I am today. I personally appreciate that our entire district's cabinet and leadership team is there when we need them, when I need them. They help me get what I need, provide me with guidance, and help me grow. Because of their support, I feel that I'm able to support my own students, staff, and community at Chori Hills. As I mentioned, I've always been happy, lucky, grateful, and proud to work here, but the work that we've done over the last five years has been the highlight of my career. We've continued to look at how to provide an extraordinary school experience for our children, and we've made amazing shifts in our classrooms and schools. I feel lucky to work with such incredible teachers and support staff who are open to learning and growing alongside our students. I feel fortunate to have supportive community members and, of course, the best kids around. Being a member of the Delmar Union School District team is something I say could cry. I know that I work hard at being the best principal I could be. We've got hard jobs, we all do, and that's not just luck, but I do feel grateful that this is where I get to spend each day.
Thank you. Rastus, followed by Julie Sleet, followed by-
Hello, my name is Rastus, and I'm a step-parent of a special needs child at Delmar Union School District. Today, I would like to bring delight and uncover foreign information that could be detrimental to the special needs students in the district. I want to highlight two documents that were shared with parents anonymously, which are cause for great concern. They are titled "A Collaborative Document from Delmar Union School District Special Education Staff and Special Education Service," which have previously been shared with Delmar Union School District Administration by the teachers. These concerns include students' right to services, the need for student support and safety of students, and excessive workload of special education staff. Sadly, 87% of respondents stated fear of retaliation should these concerns be made known to district leadership. Most concerning, some respondents state that they have been asked to perform unethical practices and remain silent regarding these practices. Is this what is best for our students? The letter states that staff have been told they need to change disability categories for other health impairment to intellectually disabled, even when the assessment team found a student or students not being intellectually disabled. The letter also states that in some cases, students' school psychologists were directed to manipulate SCIA assessment data so that students' necessary level of support is not documented accurately. With these altered SCIAS, the district is able to decrease the number of special education support staff, student services, and special education programs. Has this happened to my child? This is a dangerous and heartbreaking event. These actions directly affect the safety, the education, and the well-being of special needs students, as well as teachers and staff who support them. According to the letter, special education staff have been resigned from the greatest numbers in a two-year period in history. Staff morale is at an all-time low. Your handouts have been sent out by other parents, some are out front. It reveals that out of the 40 special education teachers, 14 are actively looking for jobs elsewhere. Per the anonymous teacher's statements from the survey, the integrity of Delmar Union School District Special Education Program has been compromised. Are these the practices and policies that are best for our students? Are we providing the best support for our special needs students? Are we supporting teachers and staff to provide their world-class education to our children? If this survey and these letters is any indication of the current status, then I would say no, and the board has an obligation to get to the bottom of this and ensure our students are supported. Thank you for your consideration and time on this.
Board, former colleagues, friends, and former friends, I'm here today to write a room and clear my name, no attack on anybody. But I read a book also in this district, Dare to Lead by Brene Brown. Clear is kind, is the chapter I remember. I did dare to lead in this district, and what I can tell you, it was neither clear nor kind. Mr. Stanley came to me on February 2nd, one day after the court orders, to tell me something, and he said it was my story to tell. In October, I received two pages of negative comments from a walk-through focused on not seeing enough district curriculum. In January, Mr. Stanley visited me about instructional concerns, but could not give me anything in writing or anything specific. Then on February 2nd, the day after the lawsuit, he came to tell me at the end of this school year, I would no longer be the principal at Delmar Heights. I was given two options: resign or be reassigned. There was never anything in writing about inadequate performance. According to Dr. McClure's last evaluation, she stated, "The accomplishments you made as a principal have been outstanding. You skillfully navigated two satellite campuses and a brand-new assistant principal. You have continued to support staff and instructional practices. You continue to embrace learning, the pedagogy, and DMUSD." Shortly after February 2nd, I met with Dr. McClure to let her know, after 10 years of being an amazing principal, I would not go back into a classroom, so my only option was to resign, even though I still don't know why. I was told six words: she needed the right people in the right place at the right time. I was that person in 2018. I got a community that didn't believe in this district on board, behind a failed bond. I got the community to support a foundation raising over $25,000 this year. I oversaw an entire school move during COVID. I mentored an assistant principal who is principal, double-digit improvements in reading and math this year at midterm, and then I wasn't the right person. So when I read in the paper, "Jason chose to leave," and knew my students would read that, I had to voice my concern. Clear is kind, right? I'm glad to be in a place where leadership actually believes that, and they haven't even read the book.
We want you back. Good evening, members of the board and all of you in the room here, as well as streaming live tonight. I'm a parent of both a neurodiverse and neurotypical child here at DMUSD. I represent a group of special needs parents who are afraid to speak up and are afraid of retaliation from the school district. The forms you hold in your hands tell a very disturbing story that I've experienced with my own child. I only have a short two minutes, so I'm going to try to focus on the intellectual disability portion of section two. My son was given an intellectual disability diagnosis when he was just five years old. Ever since this wrongful diagnosis, I've been fighting to have it removed. Why does this matter? Well, did you know the school district gets more funding when that box is strapped? Changing diagnoses is an thinly veiled attempt to suggest that a child's lack of progress is due to their lack of cognitive ability, which couldn't be further from the- is due to their lack of cognitive ability, which couldn't be further from the truth. This diagnosis is not tied to eligibility, so why have it? This also ensures that your child is placed in a more restrictive environment with access to less academic goals. If that weren't bad enough, when these children turn eighteen, they become hordes of escape if parents aren't knowledgeable enough to know that an intellectual disability prevents these children from working independently. So ultimately, labels do matter. The future of my child and children like him shouldn't be determined by a checkbox. The only way to resolve issues like these are on whom to sue, be sued, or leave, and many have, and many are still in this room right now that have. Is that the reputation that DMUSD wants to uphold? I ask that my concerns, along with all the other speakers tonight, are formally addressed by the board in the next session. Thank you.
Good evening, board president, helper, members of the board, Dr. McClurg, cabinet members. My name is Carly Carrilla, and I am the proud principal of Ashley Falls School, and honored to be a member of the Delmar Union Leadership Team. The guidance, inspiration, and support I receive in this role is nothing short of incredible. We are doing amazing things in this district, and that is because we have courageous leaders at the helm, who are focused on what is doing right for kids. Dr. McClurg is the kind of leader I aspire to be. I love when she comes to us. I don't know if you have that same experience, but I'm excited. Dr. McClurg lets me show off the amazing teaching and learning while we visit classrooms. We spend time reflecting. She offers advice, and whenever she leaves, I'm left with a little more wisdom, some ideas to ponder, and a little more love in my heart for what I get to do every day with students, staff, and families. Thank you. Thank you. I'm Danielle Borival. Angela, Nick, and me.
Can you hear me? All right. My name is Danielle Borival, and I have a child early attending DMUSD. I represent parents and teachers that fear retaliation. In the March sixteen four meeting, I explained during public comment that DMUSD is a basic aid district receiving funds from our property taxes. But did you know that that funding exceeds what they would receive under the local control funding formula? DMUSD's budget for the 2021-2022 school year is sixty-eight million. Of this, fifty-six million is received from our local property taxes. That's you and I. Did you also know the district started this school year with almost $18 million in reserves? Yet across the district, special needs families fight to obtain the services they need for their children. In some cases, they're being told there's no funds available, when the district actually receives funding for special needs. Do you have any idea how parents of these children feel when they hear these amounts? Here they are, being sued, forced to sue, spending on average rate of $300 an hour on lawyers to obtain services that should be covered by federal law. I explained in a March board meeting how the system is broken, well, it gets worse. As principals advocate for the kids, they will attempt to use the funds from the allocated buckets. If they aren't allowed to use those funds from the proper buckets, they will then run over to the general fund. Once funds are in the general fund, they can be utilized for practically anything, including lawyers. So now you have a situation where funds are almost unlimited to fight a parent that is already struggling to advocate for their child. Did you also know that the total cost of administrative positions within this district is eleven percent of the community of teacher salaries? In other words, teacher salaries across the district are twenty-two million, but administrative positions are eleven percent of that, or 2.5 million. People that are within this bucket, Holly McClurg, superintendent, three hundred and fourteen thousand, including salary and benefits. By the way, Holly makes more money than Governor Moon Soh, who is the highest-paid governor in the U.S. at 201,000, and she only oversees a student body of 3,853. Rodney Stanley, 192,000. Jennifer Huff, 192,000. Nadine Chick, 165,000. Shelley Peterson, 198,000. You have eleven people that make eleven percent of the total teacher salaries. Does that seem right to you? If the people we desperately need to help our children are being let go. The latest, from what I understand, is that the BSI contract was only extended one year. So we will be back here again next year having these same conversations. It's time to take back our power as a community, take back our schools, and make sure money goes where it's supposed to. Thank you.
Thank you for having me tonight. My name's Angelina Neglia, and I come to you all from a slightly different perspective. I'm a parent of special needs sons who worked through your entire school district, and my daughter, who have done Delmar Heights, who have done Delmar Hills, Torrey Hills, Apple Horn, Hanny Crest, so we've gone through everything through your entire school district. My son has Kabuki Syndrome and gone through all of your school districts. I've spent twenty-five years being an educational advocate and healthcare advocate. I actually do hospital appointments with my clients as well as I sit in IEP. I was in three IEPs today, actually, some of the parents, some of the people are here. But I work in all the different school districts, all the way down to the border, all the way up into Los Angeles. And about a month ago, a month and a half ago, I was working with three different law firms, sad to say, and not in this school district, and they all asked me, what is going on in the Delmar Unified School District? I said, what do you mean? This was enlightening, and that's why I'm glad you guys are listening to the frozen copy of the speeches on both sides while we're here tonight. And they said, there is a very sad climate in what's happening here, these teachers leaving, and if teachers do want to leave, some of the teachers can't leave because the school district withholds their credentials, so they can't leave. That might be true, it might be not, but I've been told this by about five different law firms that are involved in lawsuits in this school district, and this is very, very sad. The other thing they told me is there's a culture of fear, retaliation, and the special ed teachers are being very, very micromanaged, and this is something, if this was a company, you don't want your people micromanaged at the field level because you don't have OT degrees, speech pathology degrees. You have degrees, we're all quite well-educated, but when you sit around an IEP table, you have twelve or thirteen specialists, and they're amazing, they're incredible in the meetings we have, and yet I'm hearing from teachers, parents, lawyers, that the Delmar School District is changing, the climate's changed, and there is a lot of people that are teachers you're going to lose, and you've got to do something about it. You're getting rid of, the teachers, the special ed teachers feel that they're not being respected, they're being micromanaged, and these teachers, their degrees aren't worthless, because they're being micromanaged, pushed into other decisions, and that their experience in their judgment isn't valued. That's a terrible thing, whether you're a teacher or an employee of a commercial company. You should want to know what your people in the field are doing, because they're on the front line. Granted, you're all guiding and you're running a school district, but you're not here. You can visit a school, you can sit on the ground and play with students, but the special ed teachers and the parents, they're with these students every single day in the classroom and know what these children need. And I'm hearing the same thing, that the disability criteria is being taken away or being changed. Okay. So, while I'm saying, I'm hearing it from a completely different side, they inhabit from all the, turning to all different areas, wanting to know why the Delmar Unified School District is imploding, the people are leaving, go, then lose, bring power, and agents. Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Ian Dug, and I came here to listen, but an hour before the meeting, a former colleague of mine sent me a message, hoping that it would be heard, that someone could read it, and because I was raised to speak up for people who cannot speak, I'm going to be someone. These are the words of Summer Lyman, known as Summer Conover, when she worked at Torrey Hills and Delmar Heights. Members of the board, members of the Delmar Union community, in recent events, it has become clear that my experience with DMUSD should be entered into public record. I would be there to deliver my remarks in person if I could, but I have a baby at home and I can't leave her. I worked for DMUSD as a CM+ art specialist for five years, from 2015 to 2020, worked at three schools, Torrey Hills, Delmar Hills, and Delmar Heights. I love the community, wanted a feedback to receive from fellow teachers, administrators, and students, made me feel that I was an important part of the school community. Regarding the duration of my tenure, I was on a temporary contract. That meant I was always in a goodwill hiring agreement with DMUSD. That meant I could be released summarily without cause each year at the end of my annual contract. On March 27th, 2020, principals from Torrey Hills and Delmar Hills informed me my contract would not be renewed. They informed me I was no longer a fit. All efforts on my behalf were ignored by Delmar Union administrators, a petition initiated by a CTA president, Jennifer Hill, on behalf, signed by seventy Delmar Hills parents, and letters on behalf of all teachers of Torrey Hills, had no effect. Up to and including the 2020 school year, I had nothing but positive reviews in my file. I never had an indication that I was doing anything other than exemplary work. I was shocked that I was suddenly considered not a fit for DMUSD. I have a theory as to why my contract was not renewed. I shared my theory with the teachers' union attorney, who said I had a good case for wrongful termination, being advised against pursuing it because I was a temporary employee in my contract to be terminated without cause. There are two events, I believe, influenced DMUSD to consider me not a fit. First, I texted a CTA site rep with my concerns about CM+ night in March 11th, 2020. The event took, we hosted five hundred people from the community, the time the virus was spreading rapidly, and the governor had orders in place to cancel such gatherings. Second, administrators came to believe falsely that I contacted the paper about the fact that I had symptoms consistent with COVID-19. I did come down with symptoms, someone apparently did contact the paper, but it wasn't me. I am sharing my experience because it seems to corroborate a pattern of behavior. My experience suggests that the district abuses the policy of maintaining CM+ teachers on temporary contracts, giving unchecked power to hire and fire teachers who don't hold their tenure without regard to their value to students and community. If a teacher is seen as any sort of trouble or not perfectly in step with administrators, they can terminate without cause. I have since gotten over the deep personal and professional damage from wrongful termination inflicted on me. My only intention is sharing my experience here tonight because it may help make positive change that will benefit teachers, students, and the Delmar Union community.
Could you say the names again?
Nick Oset.
Good evening, members of the board. First of all, I will start by saying my name is Nick Ash. I'm a parent of Delmar Heights children, students, and I want to start off by commending all of the board for your service and leadership over the very challenging past couple of years, and so for that, thank you. However, now is not the time to become complacent. Personally, I fear that maybe I've become complacent about district performance, and it took completely incompetent and unprofessional absturber of our principal's swallow to bring to my attention other practices being carried out by district administration that are completely inappropriate. Regarding principal's swallow, for him, this is deeply personal. For us, all we can do is speculate on whether or not the district had good cause or legal cover to push him out under the vague eyes of a poor fit. But what is clear is this was a terrible decision for our children at a time when they desperately need a stability, and a huge miscalculation to assume that parents would accept an explanation that was disingenuous at best. Disturbingly, this seems to be part of a broader pattern. If there's anything positive that can be gleaned from principal's swallow's unfortunate experience, it is that it has raised awareness among a number of us and emboldened others to speak out about the culture of intimidation and bullying towards teachers by the district administration leadership. We would be doing a disservice to our children and their teachers to ignore these allegations, and we need to act now. So what can we do? It is clear that we're not going to get any answers from administration leadership. At the last meeting, Dr. McClurg gave a condescending non-answer regarding principal's swallow by introducing his replacement. There was a disturbing lack of acknowledgements, and parents were concerned or even upset. Even worse, in response to comments regarding the use of student images in a religious video from Dr. McClurg's church, she claimed she did not have anything to do with making the video or creating a video. Again, this is disingenuous at best, given that Dr. McClurg speaks for the entire three minutes of the video. Now whether or not the district has any legal cover for this video is besides the point. The handling of the issue shows a clear lack of respect for parents in the district. In a similar vein, Dr. McClurg has been demanding information about the identity of parents handing out the 2019 Teacher Satisfaction Survey, which smacks of disrespect and retaliation. Never mind that this activity was occurring as free speech on public property. So where can we turn if we do not feel the district administration has our best interests in heart? The board, we need the board's help. We need to have an independent investigation to collect the full picture about what is going on, not the least of which are the firing practices, which may unduly target federally protected classes of employees. We, as a district, may already be facing legal exposure due to inappropriate or careless personal practices, let alone an impending publicity disaster. All of this is bad for our kids. We need to get to the bottom of these claims as quickly as possible, and we need the board to act. This is not going to be easy, but it needs to be done. Thank you for your time.
When I spoke out at the last board meeting, Jason had just been fired, and we were all shocked and emotional about his sudden departure. We let you know rumor mills were turning, everyone was talking, and at that point, it was a known fact that Jason didn't leave on his own. Here's what is now being referred to as modern-day fire. I read three minutes of quotes from other schools in our district that painted a picture of fear-mongering, intimidation, and mean-girl behavior by Holly and Shelley. Three minutes, and I couldn't get through all of the negative things being said about Holly and Shelley's leadership style. And to be clear, I omitted all quotes from Delmar Heights, this wouldn't be seen as a Heights issue. We let all of you know this is not a good situation and ask for an independent investigation. We stood before this group and asked for transparency. We have received neither of those things. A survey was done in 2019 that showed a toxic environment for our teachers. Why has the school board sat on this and done nothing? What started out as justice for Jason has turned into something so, so much bigger. Now that word has gotten out that someone is finally standing up to this district's leadership style, the group of parents spearheading this is flooded on a daily basis with new insider information, or people asking if we can help them and how they can get involved. The teachers in this district have worked in fear for years. It seems the tables are now turning. If everything we are hearing is true, the board and the district's leadership should be very concerned. It's awful. I honestly hope it's not all true. We are formally requesting the board to add an independent review of the Delmar Unified School District climate, along with a review of Holly and Shelley's performance to next month's agenda. The principles who have spoken today about how great things are only shows how completely out of touch they are with the climate of the teachers at their schools. One of the quotes I read at the last meeting was, "If you don't drink the Holly Kool-Aid, you're fired." Boy, does that resonate tonight after hearing all the principals speak. Our teachers have dealt with this alone for too long. We are not going away, and we are slowing down. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Gina Vargas, and I'm a kindergarten teacher at the Heights. I'm a little nervous about speaking tonight, it's a huge group, but I'm not new to speaking to the board, to our cabinet, to Holly. I wasn't able to bring myself to speak up last month. The loss of our beloved principal was still too raw. He led our Heights family community through COVID, moving out of the Heights and the lawsuit, all while being a principal of two sites, one of which had a brand-new principal and an assistant, brand-new. Jason's a career educator. He's smart, kind, and dedicated. He loved the kids, families, and teachers at the Heights. We provided them the most difficult situations for the planet to handle, and then suddenly he was gone. He is being not a good fit, but I'm not here to bring Jason back. He's moved on, he's found another job, and my worry is he's not alone. Five other principals for the last eight years are also not good fits. This is not okay. This is not the way our district has treated principals in the past. These people are hired with stellar work histories and recommendations. The one-year tenure tenure of many principals is disruptive for our students, our staff, and our community. Why aren't any of them offered help, mentoring, or an assistance plan to help them become the principal the district wants them to be? The teachers at the Heights are not okay. We welcome our principal. We want her to be successful. We will help her in any way we can. We continue to give our all to the students we love and the families who count on us, but we are left with a hole in our heart and the knowledge that people are expendable. I was warned about speaking tonight by other teachers who were afraid to speak. They worry that speaking up puts you in a bad light for our administration and the district office. I don't want to believe that. I want to believe we all have the best interest of our students first. I want to believe I work for a district that is kind and fair. I will be of retirement age soon, and I hope I can finish my career in kindergarten, my true love. And I know that I've left my district better than when I started thirty years ago. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for allowing me to say hi and share what's honestly been on my heart for years, in the best way that I know how. I'm the mother of two amazing kids, both boys, thirteen and nine. One is typically developing, and the other one has Downer Syndrome. And many of you know him, some of you have taught him, and I love you all for all the pouring in and just the amazing, go-kart-armed way that you treated myself and my family. What I have come to share, though, are the concerns about the way our district handles special needs children. Mr. Mok, I believe that it's part of your category as a member of our board. Special education is under your leadership here. Is that true? Is that part of your area?
Sorry, but you can't be a terrain.
Okay, sorry. I just want to make sure I'm addressing the right person. I would plead with you, please, to attend meetings at the consortium for special education, to talk to parents, to reach out about what our concerns are and how to better the inclusionary practices for children with special needs. I'm just going to reach to a couple of the concerns from my last IEP meeting. Parents are concerned that the Delmar Unified School District does not see us as one team, but in fact, a district versus parents in a negotiation that they must win. Parents are concerned that Delmar Unified School District will, as usual, ignore evidence-based research and push our son to be separated from his peers, not because it's in his best interest, but because it fits their outdated model of separating students with differences and teaching them all in one setting. This is called segregation. Parents are concerned that the teachers, aides, and program specialists are not trained in inclusion practices and therefore don't know what they're doing in relation to inclusion. Transparency is always a concern, and receiving phone accurate data and drafts in a timely manner so that I can bone up is always a concern. My biggest concern, I'm most concerned with the predetermined placement decided on by the district long before my IEP meeting ever started. No child should have to earn their way into the general education class by performing or being able to do what all the other children can do. For the use of research and data states that my son's best chance of independence and success is through inclusion, and there is no evidence or stats that say the same thing about a special day class or segregated classes. Inclusion is sometimes discussed as if it were a policy schools can decide or adopt, but special education is not a place.
Yes.
Well, here we are again, looking for the board to support our teachers that you were supposed to represent. Since you haven't answered questions last month, we've had to see the truth for ourselves. And this management seems more rampant than any of us first imagined. The firing of Principal Swallow does a serious bill to our already displaced teachers and kids. And if, as you assert, the decision to fire Mr. Swallow was not premeditated, how did a replacement appear within days when this process has sure have taken weeks? How can you be okay with not explaining your actions to us? You know you work for us, right? But the firing of Principal Swallow is just one example of poor decision-making. The district track record makes it for an interesting read. I would formally like to request the board to add an independent review of DMUSD HR policies to next month's agenda. I regret deeply that the teachers of this district have had to stay silent for so long, alone and unsupported, but we didn't have the facts. The shame should be reserved for the administration who did know and did nothing. Why has the board failed to address the concerns highlighted in the 2019 teacher survey? What are you waiting for? The groundbreaking event last month should have been a day to rejoice, but any sense of celebration vanished when our much-loved principal was completely erased from the school's narrative in Dr. McClurg's speech, not even a mention. My ten-year-old asked me why that lady pretended to care about teachers and students when she had fired our principal. I didn't have an answer. Do you? Of course, you deserve credit for keeping our schools open, but it was Jason Swallow who navigated down our Heights through unprecedented times with passion, skill, and commitment. Qualities deemed not a good fit for our district. I hope we can celebrate a bright shiny new building soon, but a building only becomes a school when it's filled with our wonderful teachers, staff, and children. And can we agree that these teachers and children deserve a fresh start in a positive and supportive environment? We know that current administration can take swift action when it suits. When will our teachers and kids make the priority list? Within an hour of concern, parents handing out the 2019 survey outside school gates. I understand Dr. McClurg had already done a site, questioning custodians to try and ascertain the parents' names. Dr. McClurg, I'm glad someone finally got your attention, but what were you planning to achieve by singling out parents? Did you want to copy? Or do you have a problem with parents who support the teachers of this district? It's now much easier to imagine how difficult and stressful it must be for our teachers working in this toxic environment with fear and intimidation used to maintain their silence. This isn't going to get worse under the cover. We're not going anywhere. Every parent in every school of the district is going to know these issues exist throughout our district, not just isolation to one or two schools. We won't back down until you do your job and make this right.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I love our community. I moved my family here specifically for the school district, and my experience here has been amazing. I plan to stay and be part of this community for a long, long time. One of the greatest things about this community is that, time and again, we've had to come together for the benefit of the whole, and we have done things to enact change and stop change that we don't agree with. And yet again, the time has come, and we need to do something. The survey from 2019 is strictly a poll. Mrs. Gallagher, Mr. Bales, and Ms. Oliver, those are my school teachers that I had when I was a kid. And I remember these names because teachers make a huge impact on kids forever. And unfortunately, none of you guys are going to be remembered by our kids. You don't want to impact them directly the way that Mrs. Vargas and Mr. Phillips do every day. They're the ones that touch everything. And when you talk about a fabric of a community, they are the strongest threads in that fabric because they touch everybody. Every single kid goes through that school and talks to those kids, and those kids appreciate and learn from those teachers. Those teachers are our only avenue to speak to our kids and to understand what they're going through. They protect our kids from bullying. They protect them from just the oddness of being a kid because bullying is really, really hard. And so I don't understand how this amazing district can have eighty-one percent of its staff feeling that they are not being collaborated with. Or however asked, if the district administration involves teachers in planning professional development activities, seventy-three percent disagreed with them outright. If our veteran teachers have been here for twenty, thirty years are feeling this marginalized, how are we surprised that our most marginalized students, the ones in special ed, are afraid to even speak up to, to fight for what they need? The teachers, I'm so proud of all the teachers that came and did that today. We need real answers to these concerns, not just emails or blanket boilerplate answers that you can send off to everybody. We need real answers. We need real action. Our teachers need to be able to speak up without fear of retaliation. We need real answers as to why Principal Swallow quit and why five principals have been moved around and demoted over the last eight years, why our STEAM teacher staff is dwindling and stretched thin. Is the culture at DMUSD driving away great teachers to replace them with yes men and women just to answer to you guys? I really hope not, because I don't want that. I make your formal request that an independent audit of the environment of the DMUSD teachers and staff be added to the agenda immediately, and that a vote is taken to make the changes necessary to resolve these problems. You are our voice, and if necessary, you're our hammer. We need you to make the action. We can only do it through you, the board. Without you, we, the parents and the teachers, are powerless to enact meaningful change. If you're unwilling to work with us, we'll find someone who will. Thank you.
Good evening, President Halpern, the board, Dr. McClurg, and cabinet members. My name is Kimberly Jackson, and I'm a former parent of three at Delmar Heights, and now have two at the Hills. I'm here to show my support for the wonderful Jason Swallow and all the Delmar teachers, including the terrific special education program teachers, as they have had two kids with IEPs at our Delmar schools. We want and need transparency as to why Jason Swallow's contract was not renewed. He was the best thing that ever happened after our beloved Mrs. Wardlow retired. Kids, parents, and staff loved Jason. This is a tragic loss at an especially bad time with the rebuild and with COVID. Although, with Jason's exit came a wave of voices. Parents are now learning about the culture of fear that our teachers are living with daily. The micromanaging in the special education programs by Jenny Ha and the fear of retaliation for speaking out. Why is Dr. McClurg and her staff not listening to the staff surveys? Why? Your staff is voicing their concern, but no one is hearing them. I personally know of many teachers looking to make a move. It will be a tragic loss for your school district. I request that the board formally add an independent review of the Delmar Union School District's climate to next month's agenda and also vote at that time on how to proceed. Thank you.
We are at item 5.1, we're recognition of DMUSD employees of the month. Just, I think you all know the board cannot respond to a comment at this time. But thank you all.
Good evening. Congratulations to these DMUSD employees of the month for the month of April. From Ashley Falls, Emily Coster, guidance counselor from Delmar. Chris Ellis, sixth-grade teacher from Delmar Heights. Nicole Poszicek, STEAM+ music teacher from Delmar Hills. Monica Sorison, second-grade teacher from Oceanair School. Monica Teck, first-grade teacher from Sage Canyon School. Shannon Geno, STEAM+ art specialist from Sycamore Ridge. Sarah Rhodes, second-grade teacher from Torrey Hills School. Sarah McCarty, fourth-grade teacher and from the Delmar College. Karen Harris, accounting technician. Please join me in congratulating these staffs.
5.3 is the Delmar School Development Foundation, who has president. Okay, 5.4 is the Order Board of Delmar Parents Association. Sage Canyon School, PTA's president, Maureen Abel.
I'm Maureen Abel. I'm the president of the Sage Canyon PTA. And I hope I can do as good of a job as the little kids. So the topic I just present on is how the PTA supports mental wellness, physical health, and fun. Our mission is to positively impact the lives of all children and families, and I wanted to point out that once a month, Holly hosts a meeting with all of the PTA presidents in the district. This is my first year as the PTA president, and it's been pretty incredible to get to work with the PTA presidents at all of your schools. I mean, it really is collaborative, and we learn about what different programs and assemblies and events you're doing. And I can say that we, in those meetings, definitely feel heard and we benefited from being able to work together every month. So to start with mental and physical wellness, Torrey Hills had Wellness and Self-Care Week, which I think is amazing, and I plan to do next year at Sage. So every day at lunch, they had yoga, or drawing, running, dancing, gardening, you know, just to get the kids outside doing different activities. At Sage Canyon, our principal helped us get our garden club up and running again this year with some funding from the PTA and parent volunteers. It's a weekly commitment that the kids have to make, so they commit that every week on a certain day, they're going to show up. And I can tell you, our garden did not look like this last year. So it is being brought back to life. We have a, it hasn't happened yet, but we're hosting a family overnight campout at Delmar Hills. We're going to use their campus, and that is a very fun activity. We got the idea from the Delmar Heights PTA a couple of years ago, so we're looking forward to that. For school assemblies, we work together with Sycamore Ridge to get the imagination machine to come out. And what I wanted to point out here is that by working together, we are actually saving money by being able to plan these events during the same weeks and split some of the costs between the PTAs at the different schools. And then Delmar Hills, this I love, founded an organization called Nature Unplugged that I would encourage everybody to go on their website. And their mission is really to combat the overuse of technology, and they do not only assemblies, but they have different ideas for parenting at home and different things you can do to really get kids back out in nature. And they focus on the impact of springtime versus springtime. And so they did an assembly at Delmar Hills that I hope we plan to bring to our school next year. And then fun, which is, I think, what people see most often. Torrey Hills had their eighties glow dance recently, and those are some pictures from their event. They're having a handball tournament, I think, in the upcoming week. At Sage, we have a talent show coming up in about two weeks, which will be amazing. It's one of my favorite events. We had our dance as well in the past couple weeks, which is one of the pictures on the top right. Sycamore Ridge held a bingo night. So that concludes my presentation, but I did just want to thank all the parents who volunteered, and, you know, the board for all of the work you do, and Holly for bringing all of the PTAs together. And Holly for bringing all of the PTAs together so that we can do work together and continue to get good ideas and benefit from each other.
Thanks. And thanks to those of you who are staying. You have to keep expanding on the agenda a little later. I really want to strike to that. Okay, so we're going to do board of this. Let's start at the end. Five point nine.
Hi, I had the pleasure of attending the Blue Ribbon Ceremony at Carmel Delmar. That was a highlight of my month for serving on the Board. And I'm just amazed, Julie, that we've accomplished that at two elementary schools. It's a really great honor. Yeah, so congratulations to you guys.
I'll just say I was at that Blue Ribbon Ceremony as well. Congratulations on that.
Well, I chair the North City West Facilities Financing Authority. We have a meeting. And those meetings are generally short because we're just monitoring the tax payments of the Delaware's districts. However, we do see some money coming back from that, the districts that are involved. And I'm happy to say we're going to continue receiving some of those funds. I do want to not avoid the elephant in the middle of the room here and say that I do believe it's important to look at what's going on and the climate seen anywhere that people were, I think that's an important step to do. I do believe that those looks should be done from a positive perspective rather than a negative perspective. And I'll do those that are looking for an independent audit one better and focus on the eight point one in the agenda tonight rather than waiting for future agendas. And propose that within our district design, well, I guess we're going to change it from district design twenty twenty-two to district design, what, twenty twenty-six? I think that we should incorporate something that has to do with not only communication among staff, reviews of what's going on in the various schools, among the teachers and the various departments. We should make sure that that becomes part of our strategic plan going forward. And so I would ask that we incorporate that into our strategic plan rather than look backward at what has happened in the past. Let's keep an eye through the windshield instead of the rearview mirror. And one other thing, I do look forward to visiting all of the campuses again. COVID put a wrench in that and we've been unable to come and visit. But it is one of the highlights of any day that that occurs, that I can sit down and count blocks with kids. Because I don't get to do that on a regular basis anymore. My daughter's graduating college. That's my report.
My turn. Yeah, thank you very much, everyone, for bringing your inputs and your feedback. I think it's, to be back on, I think it's actually important. I think you do need to have some, because we need employees who collect feedback and find out and get an honest assessment of what is happening in our district. I think that's really important. I care what's going on in the district. I care what's happening with our teachers. I care what's happening to all of our staff in our schools right now. And I want to have an honest assessment and to understand what's truly going on. As a Board, we need to understand that. And I think that we look beyond that. I think it's a dereliction of our duty. We should need to look at that and understand truly what's happening. Beyond that, in terms of what I did last month, I did also attend a North Coast Consortium for Special Education meeting. And as always, I was kind of saying that it's very, there's a lot of information going on there. I appreciate that they have these meetings for us to learn more about it. But one piece I would take away from it is that our, the chair of that meeting was a board member at Oceanside School District. And he's also a special education teacher in the S and D's Union School District. And the one thing that he was asked, you know, all this stuff is going on, what is the one thing that you would, as a teacher in special ed, what do you think is needed to help the situation, help special ed students? He's like, the one thing is really, you need more qualified people. You need more staff. You need more resources dedicated to that issue. So for me, I think that's crucially important. My big takeaway from that is that it's necessary that we have more qualified people, more qualified staff, working with students that have needs of all sorts. Kind of needs that needs of students who are parents. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's see. So I attended the DMSCF meeting. Mrs. Phoebe is not here. I'll brag on her a little because they have, and the whole DMSCF Board has just really done a great job. They are ahead of schedule relative to the same time in all the previous years by, I think, one hundred fifty to two hundred thousand dollars in fundraising. So they're doing a great job and very organized. I know there's going to be a leadership transition coming up with Phoebe rolling out of the district, but I don't want to, like, jump the gun and make any announcements. But I think it's going to be great and lots of continuity going forward with that group. So really appreciate all our collaboration, the district and the schools and the principals and PTAs and everybody to pull off what they're pulling off illegally. Okay, so I also attended the third, part three of three of the equity training that the Board was invited to participate in. We forgot to mention that. Sorry, Catherine's here too. We are doing it across other school boards. So we have Selena Beach in the group that Catherine and I are in. I'm not sure what other folks are doing, but. And it's just kind of a slice of what the teachers and staff are getting a chance to be part of. But it's really, I think it's been great and a great leadership from the trainers there. It seems like, and I heard feedback from the teachers and staff too about how it's going. So I really appreciate the chance to be involved with that. And I took my time to the Blue Ribbon Ceremony. There's a lot of those joyous moments and makes it all worth it to see all those beautiful kids, like, very happy and joyous and celebrating all of their accomplishments. And hats off to you, Mrs. Lerner, for all that. So the second school in a row of Blue Ribbons, like a really very difficult award to get. I think it's only three hundred and change elementary schools are selected for that award in any given year. We have other ones in our district, Tills and Oceaneers, I think, have already received that award. So it's really recognition of a job well done in our district by the state level leadership and by district staff leadership to make that kind of thing happen. It's not, it's not my chance, I'm going to say, at our state of the city. So thank you for that. And again, just a second, we're set up here. We appreciate everyone coming. I really think there's a great opportunity in the teaching and planning section to talk about positive and proactive ways to move forward as districts and all their progress that we've been working on. Okay, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. McClurg for the Board. Superintendent.
Great. So we are continuing to advocate for funding pre-universal transitional kindergarten. As we know, we are currently not eligible to receive funding. So this week, we are communicating with the Governor's Office to hopefully, hopefully secure an avenue for that funding that actually is budgeted for in the state's budget for all four-year-olds, all children who would be eligible for TK to actually be, have a route to get to a district like ours of basic age districts. Because right now, none of the children who attend school in a basic age district qualify are eligible to generate funding for the district. So we're advocating for that right now. And we hope that that route to get that funding to districts would be in place before the Governor's may revise. So that's what we're working on right now. We had a STEAM Plus Invitational. It was excellent. It was wonderful to see the follow-through from that. Another great way to get input from teachers and staff who are there. And so it's exciting to already see all of that kind of feedback and information being put into, to being used in other ways. There was a STEAM Plus Advisory that that group that actually started really thinking about and working with that as well. So it's exciting to see that. We had a five parent information night. We've had actually three of them, I think. And that's exciting to see that underway. And that school is on schedule to open in August. Open houses have happened all over the place. So we have STEAM, the STEAM Plus Nights, as I mentioned earlier, outstanding. And along with kindergarten information nights. And you can tell that things are getting to be much back to where they have been. So that's exciting to see that. And again, meeting with the PTA presidents and DLEC, as was mentioned earlier. DLEC is our English, District English Language Advisory Committee. We meet, they meet several times a year. And then once a year, we meet as a collective of PTA presidents. And that's a way for the collective to actually give input on the district, on where we are, on thoughts moving forward. So we went through the LCAP and they had a chance to provide some input there and obviously take the survey as well. So it's another great avenue to get input from those votes as well. So and again, congratulations to Carmel Delmar. I was there as well. So Julie, all of your staff isn't here, but I know that they know how pleased they are. Or pleased, pleased they, they have the every reason to be. Children were so excited that day. It was the, it was a big, huge celebration, as it should be, for all the things that have been done on behalf of the children at that school. So great work. And please send again, congratulations from everybody to your staff and to all of the kids. Congratulations. National Blue Ribbon is a very, very highly regarded award. That is a national award. So congratulations. That was my report.
Thank you. Okay, so we're at item five point seven. So this is here with the hope regarding agenda items. Anyone who'd like to address the governing board and have to ignore an agenda item, your speaker's slip should be turned in at this time. If you're recognized and called to the podium, when your requested agenda item comes up. So if you have any comments on the agenda items for anyone now. Okay, five point eight is board approval minutes for the March sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. And March twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. If there's any items, you just, you bring them up and I call the agenda item at the timeline. One, speaker for item six point six. You bring up the agenda item now. Is that the question? Okay, so then, so we're at five point eight, sorry. Board approval minutes for the March sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, March twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, and March thirtieth, twenty twenty-two meeting. Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
It's a motion.
Thank you. All a favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Then it's approved. Item six point one to six point two seven are consent items. Are there any questions on consent? Okay, we do have a prompt. So for, anybody? Okay, six point six, Maria H.
Good evening. I took the time this week to review the purchase orders that were attached to the agenda. And I'm very concerned about the district's financial responsibility and transparency or lack thereof. The district spent three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars on these fees during the month of March only across four different law firms. A hundred and seventy-three thousand was on district administration only. There are no clear descriptions on what these legal fees were spent on. Please tell us what these legal fees are for. We have a right to know. These legal expenses are a reflection of poor choices being made. And I want to know what needs to change in order to prevent all these legal issues in the first place. Transparency is another red flag in the document provided. As a description. Transparency is another red flag in the document provided. As the description column shows only a brief category made for each expense and not an actual description. Some expenses are from Amazon listed on materials and supplies. This is a completely meaningless description as you can literally buy anything on Amazon. There are several repeating charges of exactly the same amount, such as a thousand and seventy-five, seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents, which happens to be exactly a thousand dollars plus tax. What items cost exactly a thousand dollars that the district is buying? We don't know. I also found several expenses assigned to a site zero sixty-seven. There are fifteen sites described on the document, but zero sixty-seven is not defined. What is site zero sixty-seven and why is it not listed in the document? Looking back at the February expenses, I see a meeting expense on February seventeenth of the restaurant Farmer and the Seacourts for almost twenty-five hundred dollars. We don't know what that expense was for. We don't know who attended this meal. Assuming a generous fifty dollars per person, there would have to be a fifty people at this meeting. Now, the district is currently working on removing the much-needed BCI positions from our schools, claiming the cost is too high, even though they provide essential value to the children in our schools. What value are we getting from these expensive restaurant meetings? How many hours of BCI wages could that twenty-five hundred dollars have provided our children? I have zero confidence that the Board and superintendent are doing their jobs. It is clear that we need an administration that listens to parents, serves our kids, and not themselves. Accounting is sloppy and it needs to be clear and complete with all the information needed to both inform both parents and board members exactly how the money is being spent going forward. So my question to the Board today, who are about to vote to approve these expenses, did all of you know the answers? Do all of you know the answers to all of my questions? Have all of you reviewed this expenses as much as I have? Thank you.
Thank you. Now, if we're asked questions about the consent, then I know that not.
Yeah, I had a couple, just a quick one second. On six point eight, I think that's you, Chris. It's about one, one question. My understanding is that, like, we're not using choice lunch anymore. We can't use choice lunch anymore. They aren't able to participate next year. And so, and then we had to go find another group. Are there, in an emergency situation, is that group offering roughly some of prices? Is it?
So this group is offering prices that will be lower than what we were paying with choice lunch. I'll say that we've worked to get a contract and also say that they're not a huge number of options. So our team's worked very hard to find a team that will provide a vending meal program in the timeframe before our kitchen opens.
Great. Thank you very much. I just want to take a look into what you were doing there. And it sounds like you guys are doing a good job with that. Thank you so much. The other one I was curious about was six point ten, which was a piggyback. I was confused as to what, what is being purchased and what's it being used for.
So the piggyback is to purchase the, just let me show you the, the ideation wall, whiteboard walls. So we've been purchasing these for a couple of years. However, with school purchasing, you will have bids that will expire. And so as we're looking at the modernization of classrooms this summer, we wanted to continue with what's been successful in years past. And we needed a new bid through which, a purchasing vehicle through which to purchase those whiteboard walls.
Okay, great. Thanks for agreeing.
Could you explain the piggyback concept?
So the idea of a piggyback bid is a district will go up to bid and they will write in the manner where other districts could use the same bid. The benefit of that is it saves time and effort from other districts because there is a fair amount of time and effort to go through the formal bid process. But you benefit from the fact that there was a competitive bid process and therefore we are getting the good pricing that another district got. And so it's very typical, especially for products, goods and services, goods especially, that you would go through a piggyback process because it saves time and effort and you can get a good price on top.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Thanks. All a favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Consent agenda is approved. Okay, and we're on to eight point one, Board Report District Design Twenty Twenty-Two Review and Strategic Planning Steps.
Good evening again. I'm here to share about the district design where we are. As was referred earlier, we are in year twenty twenty-two. So it's, it's hard to believe that the concept of district design started way back, actually before twenty seventeen. And so we'll take a step back in just a moment. But I do want to say this is an update as we.
But I do want to say this is an update as we regularly do. It's not a summative report because we're still in twenty twenty-two. And so this strategic plan continues to guide our work as we move into the next school year event. So I'm pleased to report to you tonight some of the important highlights thus far and then some conversation about what happens next. So I talked a little bit about, about it already as far as when it began. It was way back as far, the official start date was twenty seventeen, so five years ago. And the, the thinking and the input and the conversation around what went into that initial strategic plan, which was then named district design twenty twenty-two as a part of that whole process, it started way before that. And we were looking at so much about, you know, who, what are our beliefs? And what are we all about? And what are some of the conversations that we're having? And what was some of the input that we got from our previous strategic plan, which all of us had been a part of as well, at least those of us who have been here? And we really started to realize as we were looking at things and a lot has been talked about tonight about our children. When we look at our children, who are the children and what do they need from us? What we really started to see was that our children need us to be thinking about education today. And when I talk about today, I talk about back in two thousand seventeen and project into the next several years. And that really required all of us as educators, and some of us are in the room tonight, to look at what has the structure of school looked like over many years? And we started to really listen to one another and think about the structures and the systems and the beliefs that had all been in place for years and years. And actually, it was decades before that. And we surrounded ourselves with parents and we actually surrounded ourselves with many, many experts, not just inside the district, but outside the district and outside of education. And it became very illuminating that one of the things that we started to realize was that we actually have, we actually have a, a common interest in thinking about schooling in a way that might look different than it has before. And really started owning words like revolutionizing it and revolutionizing how we think and making sure that we're listening to our children and one another as we do that. And it was really interesting to hear from, and this is actually an artifact from our current strategic plan, that outlined that process way back in two thousand sixteen, seventeen that we went through. So we had so many different planning groups and ways to survey and ways to give input and, and sort through all of it as we went through that whole process. And we ended up with a really well-articulated plan that did become about revolutionizing what we do and our vision of our unrelenting pursuit of the extraordinary school experience. We live that every day here. And it is true, I am so proud to work with the people in this district because it is about thinking about what children need and it's about thinking. When I think about where we are compared to where we were five years ago, I will tell you, we all think differently than we did then. And so do our children. And that's the most exciting part, is we've really come so far in how we've learned and grown together in our mission to ignite the genius in every child. So it's interesting to look back and this is one, one snapshot of how did all of this even come to be that has resulted in all of the fine work over the last several years? We did land on three levers. I'm not going to read them all to you. But the first lever, actually the three different levers, strong academic core, high quality instruction. The second lever is the skills that matter most. And the third lever is environmental. All of those became the core to really what we're all about. And these are the five-year long-term objectives. And then from there, as you know, because we report on this regularly, each year we have district-wide, year-long, annual priority objectives that are garnered from lots of focus groups, inputs, surveys, student focus groups, teachers, all of the parents, all of that input as to where we are. And then the school sites personalize that for their own school. What does that look like for each school? And then, so because everybody's in a different place, what does each individual in the district? How does each person personalize their own growth? And that's what's been exciting to see all of us grow and learn from one another over this, over the last several years. So I'm not going to read each one. They're part of our document, but I want, I think it's important to go back and refocus in on the actual long-range objectives that we have. So now I'd like to share with you some of the things that stand out as I think now, as we reflect and what I've been able to hear from different groups that I've been a part of in the last, not too, not too distant future, about too distant past now, what are some of those things that are standing out right now? Right now, the physical health of our district is strong. One of our supporting priority actions is exactly about this. We just had a triple A Moody's rating. You'll hear more about that later in the, in the presentation this evening where you actually have that as an agenda item to vote on. But this is a strong indication. It is one of the things I will tell you in our industry that we look at as a definite, when we gauge the temperature of our fiscal standing, this is absolutely one of those things that we, that we use to gauge that. Recently, UC article came out just this last week in April. Only six districts in Sandywood County don't protect deficit spending within the next three years. We are one of those six districts. We have a lot of strength and it is because of some of the things listed there. Proactive planning to meet our corporate major obligations. We actually have clear goals, mentioned in our district design twenty twenty-two, that drive what we do and how we do allocate resources. And yes, we are very intentional with every single identified item and how we do pay attention to where we are allocating those resources so that we can meet our obligations and do what is best for children. And then of course, the passage of measure MM, which is our bond repo, our bond program that's producing results. Some of you probably remember back in two thousand twelve, we actually had a, had a, it was a long, long time ago, but by, by people, lots of different people were involved at the time, et cetera. But a bond did not pass. And we then said, you know what? We knew, we knew we had, we needed to, to address the significant fiscal, the, the very important, significant facilities need in our district. And so we then owned, what does that look like? Developed a very comprehensive and well-thought-out facilities master plan over, I, I can't even tell you how many meetings and how many people were involved in that process. And then in the actual, the actual development of the bond program. So it's been exciting to now see that it's producing results and we're very excited about that. I do want to go back and talk a little bit more about the proactive planning because I do think this board deserves great credit and our staff for really thinking ahead so that we can meet our obligations for our pension and benefits program. A couple of years ago, the board started the CalPERS cert account that is the California Employers Retiring Benefit Trust. Wise investment producing great results so that we can meet, meet future obligations. We actually have a plan for school number nine so that we can assume that into our budget as we open that this next school year, as well as it's very, very thoughtful planning for deferred maintenance in our district. So this is one of the highlights that needs to be addressed because it is absolutely a strength in our district. And I appreciate the comment earlier about things are not an accident in our district. They're intentional. We, we pay attention to what matters and we are purposeful in our planning and we have a guide. So it should definitely be noted that it all about works to results. I talked already about the three levers. I will tell you, one of the things that's actually a significant accomplishment is something that we're actually living right now as culture in our district. And I will tell you, it's been very significant over the last five years with the, we've got, this is a five-year plan. Two of those years were a pandemic. That is significant. And even within the midst of a pandemic, and I will tell you, it was just at a, at a meeting yesterday where Classrooms for the Future Foundation had presented. And I will tell you, the county superintendent stood up and one of the things he said when he was talking, superintendent of Sandywood County Office of Education, he said, this has been the most challenging time that he has ever known to be an educator. And I think we need to stop and pause for a moment because that impacts where every single one of us is. And I want to applaud every person in this district who has been part of the accomplishments thus far and acknowledge the incredible work, sacrifice, great leadership, great skill in the classroom and commitment to always learning and growing. Because even during a pandemic, that's been two years of our district strategic plan. It's incredible. We are reveling, shysing the school experiment, experience. We've had a commitment to doing what is right for children. We embrace radical change and it really did result in us being able to embrace, actually not knowing exactly how a pandemic was going to turn out. But you know what? People came together and did the right thing for kids, collaborating and listening and having an orientation for action. So listening and then doing something about it. And I can tell you, everybody that speaks, whether or not it's at a board meeting, at a focus group, at a parent group, at a PTA meeting, at a principal's coffee, the principals, they're listened to and we think about what is this telling us and what do we need to do with it? And, and it's such a strength of our district. Another big highlight is the school experience. We have classrooms right now that are robust with intellectual stimulation. One of the exciting things that's coming out of our district design twenty twenty-two is how kids are thinking. And it's not only the kids, how we as adults are thinking and how we're guiding one another's thinking and teaching kids to be thinkers. What's interesting is we reflect back on this. We set this as a priority action way back in two thousand seventeen and we weren't exactly sure how this was going to come, come about. And now to see our classrooms alive with students who think and create and they question and they're solving meaningful problems and they're, we don't measure things just by a score on the test. It's really, really a measurement of success for our district. We have highly skilled teachers and staff through all, every single part of the last five years. We've been committed to quality professional learning and we have as a result talented teachers who understand the complexity of teaching, to understand how to teach kids to think in the various disciplines listed up there. And teaching is, it is not easy. It is actually a very complex endeavor. And every child is different, every need is different and every child has a different genius. And that is what makes this work so exciting. Because when it all comes together and you're able to actually provide those different entry points for children, you see this success for every child in our district and it's been just fantastic to see. I will tell, was intricate, tell you, it was interesting to see this unfold over the last couple of years during the pandemic because one of the things that became very clear, we had to actually shift very quickly to making sure that we had very robust skills at going from what we knew is only an in-person environment to going to an online environment. And the, the capacity of our staff to lead one another through that and the willingness for everybody to learn through that and to provide, again, different points of entry for our teachers was so, so important. Because at that point, there was, I remember there being a menu of different, of different professional learning opportunities that teachers could opt into that our instructional services department actually put on. And I don't know how many dozens of those, of those, of those sessions there were. But our teachers could think, could determine what it was that they needed at that moment. And then they had the option to actually participate in that professional learning. And it really did hit the mark with what, what teachers needed. And as a result, we had a wonderful transition. It wasn't easy. It was really, really hard, a lot of hard work, but it was good for kids. The other, another main significant, another significant accomplishment is our environments. We know is the context, the whole context of school is important. And how the, how the kids interact within the environment and at school has a dramatic impact on, on their learning, on their disposition and how meaningful learning is. So as we actually transform our environments, both in the, all of the smaller learning spaces as well as the common learning spaces, it's been exciting to see kids' agency continue to develop and teachers work alongside one another to determine how does it work for kids to actually have the most meaningful experiences within the environments as possible. And they actually have, have a commitment to transforming environments at all of our schools. Not just, not just a brand new school, but all of our schools and all of our spaces. And our C and plus teachers have been a part of helping to transform some of those common learning environments so that we actually have just the most robust experiences happening in those environments as well. So we think about the next steps for our strategic planning. With the year twenty twenty-two actually upon us and we'll, obviously we'll be closing in on it in the next several months, we're thinking about what happens next. And obviously, we've had a robust and very highly effective strategic plan in place. We want to think about our stakeholder input, about our current state and desired outcomes. And we're actually participating in some of that right now with focus groups. You can see all the different types of stakeholders and different levels of groups and combinations there and how to, how to meet with people and get input. Feedback and surveys, we're thinking about how to best do that from our students, obviously. They're our number one. They always are in the, they're always in the room, whether or not they're physically in the room or not when we think about this from our staff and our parents. And we obviously have an LCAP survey that just went out to thousands of people. And I know we're getting, we have received thousands of results from the one we just did this year. Thinking about school site teams, how does that work as we get input and develop our next ideas for long-term strategic planning teams? What kind of formalized teams would we have coming together? And then obviously, we want to think about the plan of development and the timeline for that actual development. And how would we want facilitation to work? So who would facilitate and what would that, what are the options for that? So just very briefly, we'll talk through each part here of the spring of two thousand twenty-two we're in right now. These things are happening right now, so you can see the ongoing input from stakeholders. And then we're beginning to think about as a collective, what might the priority actions for two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three look like? Because obviously, we're going to be developing those priority actions with our current DB twenty twenty-two plans. So, so that's one of the things that we are in process, in process with right now. Then when we think about the summer, we'll be putting some more articulation around the formal process to include stakeholders for, you know, how does that, how does this look as we enter into the fall, which will be some of our very intensive strategic planning group meetings and, and input sessions. And then fall will be presenting to the board, obviously, the priority actions for the next school year that we always do at the beginning of the school year. So that will be, that will be proposed priority actions. And then we'll move into that new school year and then continue the new plan development. So the stakeholder input will inform those long-term objectives that I showed you from the, from the one that we're currently in. And as we look to winter and spring of the, of the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year, we'll look at completing a new strategic plan and bringing to the board an approval for the new strategic plan. So a lot has, is in progress right now. So much to be pleased with and excited about. And it's been really fun to hear the difference. I don't get to be in every room because there's all sorts of student focus groups that happen when I'm out there. And it's wonderful to actually get to hear some of the, the students' input as well. And it's been, but, and it's been wonderfully dope what we're talking about.
Thank you very much for that update. Okay, we're, we can discuss some topics, but wow. I mean, it's amazing to think what's happened over this past five years or so. I, it seemed like it was yesterday that we were planning, I was in this room, planning, you know, doing some of those initial workshops, many of you remember, for developing the CD twenty twenty-two and then the rollout. Who's ever imagined how far the district would come even with the interruption of the global pandemic? So I think that you and a leadership team can be very proud of, of one of the work that's gotten done. The, the results involve every single person at every level in schools. And it's, it's really just having so many teachers, staff, parents, kids, like roaming in the same direction. I think that has made some of these results possible. There's always room for improvement and I think that's where we can look ahead and then think about our next strategic plan and our next round of goals and how we might support those. So we'll talk about that in a second, but I wanted to invite the board members to comment or ask any questions.
How, how do you?
You don't have to raise your hand. I brush your butt.
I got a lot of teachers here. How, how can we incorporate some of the, the concepts that were brought up tonight into a strategic plan? I'm just, it, it, I, I want it to be all inclusive. I want it to include, include the community. I want it to include the staff. I want it to be positive. And so I would, you know, I don't have the answer otherwise I'd be saying it. So I, I want that to be a piece that we make sure is firmly placed within our strategic plan, that we do look at not just the, the temperature, but the health of, of the district on a regular basis as part of our strategic plan. Because I think that's an important lever, as we call it. And, and so I, I'm just voicing my support for having that happen.
Yes, and tonight, this kind of a meeting is, as, as with every time we are hearing from people, it tells us something. So what is it telling us? What do we do? What do we do with that? What, how does it inform, you know, for this example, your example right now? How does it form, how, inform how we might think about getting input for strategic planning as we move forward, as well as gauging, making sure where it can. as well as gauging, making sure we're, we can hear from everybody who has something to say and wants to be a part of it. So I think that this, this kind of a meeting, as well as any other, whether it's a principals' coffee or, you know, a classroom in a parking lot, all of those can be opportunities and touchpoints for people to give input that give us a reason to stop and pause and think, what is, you know, what is that telling me and do something with it?
And I also want it to be a process by which it's a fear-free environment. In other words, people that express opinions about where we could be going can do so without fear of retaliation or recourse of, or I think it's important that it be a healthy environment as well.
Yeah, and I just wanted to add to that. I mean, I think that this isn't the best kind of format of a meeting to have real dialogue and that's what I think the opportunity is for the strategic planning processes with the public comments. It's one way, we can't respond, it's not a dialogue. But I think that in both developing the strategic plan and then figuring out who are going to measure our success at achieving the various elements of the strategic plan, there can be opportunities for dialogue. I welcome folks to share their ideas over the coming months for, you know, what are the best ways to engage the community in the plan? Because of the planning for the plan, right? It's how to get people involved in all these different aspects and making sure that you have a good plan. And then how I see it is you make objectives and then you, you know, you hold yourself to account and then how, right? Then that's the opportunity for surveys or focus groups or all the different mechanisms that we can use to make sure that we're actually meeting the goals and all these objectives across the board. And I really hope that we can build all that in to the plan. And just to add, I completely agree with what Kevin Kunitz said earlier about authentic, honest and valid feedback. I think that is something that can be built into the process and building the plan and the plan itself and the outcomes of the plan. So I really hope that that is scary and we engage on this one.
I wasn't here for the last five-year plan, so I was wondering if someone that was there maybe enlightened me how, how that process looked and what, what was the level of engagement from the MND, from, from teacher and staff? You know, because I'd love to see robust engagement as possible. And so can somebody share like what it looked like while you were there?
Just to add, I wasn't there either. How do we as trustees, help in this process? So Chuck, what?
I was there. And just to answer your question, it seemed like it was a big room full of people with different ideas that slowly came to a home, is what it felt like to me. What I'd like to see is that room full of people be opened to as many, you know, as we can. It was in this room, maybe we moved to a bigger room and we have more of a confused start than come to a point. But I think the ultimate goal is to come to a point and realize that we're all eventually going to be roaming in the same direction and because Jim Peabody told me, as long as what we do, we do for kids, we're going to do the right thing. And I try to stand by that and I think everybody else does too. So that's what it was. It was organized confusion in the beginning and came to a realistic plan that we followed and has made good strides in education for our districts.
I think you're talking about more of the formal meetings, which there were. And then if we look at all of the focus group meetings, because that, that obviously was so informative and all of the surveying, et cetera, that led to, and you can see here, my eyesight isn't that great, but we had district objectives, focus group leadership team, focus group parent, focus groups, staff, focus group teacher idea, focus group D-Lab, focus group kid. And so there were a lot of different focus groups that were getting input along the way that Doug points out. So we would have a meeting and then, and then there would be a lot of input in between and then come back together because at some point you need to somehow articulate all of what's happening. And so you're talking about that kind of formal group that was coming together and trying to make sense of all of the feedback input from all of the, you know, I mean, there would have been, I mean, obviously our students were part of it, so there were thousands of people involved in it. It was, it was, I will tell you, incredibly comprehensive and involved. And I would say that whatever process we go through this next spring, summer and fall would be just as much so if not more.
I have a question regarding, I mean, we've heard a lot from special education teachers and parents tonight. So where do they fall into these focus groups?
So that's something we think about is even having, you know, a focus group with different people, you know, with, around different topics maybe that would, you know, invite people in and they know that we're going to be discussing a certain part of the planning or something that we want specific, you know, input or feedback on. They obviously are all a part, all of our parents are a part of parent focus groups, PTA, et cetera. So, and the students are always a part of the student focus groups.
And I think you made mention of something, how do we fit into these focus groups? I think if we confine ourselves to what we did in the past, we're going to do the same thing over again. I think we've got to expand our thoughts to include different and more perhaps focus groups that incorporate people that weren't part of the last strategic plan. So I think it's important to use that and move forward and consider what else we can have.
A lot of it is very, the closer we can get to the actual student that that are so much of the most valuable input is from our school sites with, you know, children talking directly to teachers, whether it could be in the form of actual surveys, conversations that we actually do around this or meeting with principals, principals meeting with parents and teachers. So so much of it is done at the local level and then brought to that more formal process that you were talking about, Doug.
I mean, I remember having a conversation with you, actually before the last board meeting about professional surveys, non-meeting questions, really to get a feel, you know, in the context of this district design 2022. Because what good organizations will do is they'll be able to take that information and then follow it with surveys later to see, are you going in a positive or a negative direction from the answers on that survey? So I would like to see in the process leading up to that is gathering that information. Some of the people have discussed that tonight about having independent, but it's really more of a professionally designed survey to really get climate, what people think are important, making sure you're focusing, addressing all the stakeholders that are involved and getting good data in order to be able to take that into the, into our strategic plan. So that way we know what we need to focus on for the next five years and then be able to take that survey, repeat it again down the road to see, did we make progress into that? So that's what I would like to see. And I said, you and I have had that conversation even before the last board meeting on that. So I'm hoping we can move forward in that directions fairly soon.
Who are you, who would be the person administering that survey? Like what's the, you hire?
You have to hire is a professional group that does these types of climate surveys.
Staff.
Well, for any stakeholders that you might, that you're trying to survey. So, I mean, there's lots of stakeholders. There, I mean, you've got, you've got parents, you've got teachers, you've got, you know, this, the community. So try and get a good feel for what's going on around, around the district and where we need to focus our, our resources and our efforts on. And as Doug says, and that's, I think, what the actions we all follow is what's best for the kids. So, and we always try to think through that lens, so.
But that's what I was going to add is, you know, having, not just a survey for the sake of a survey, but survey oriented to telling us, are we doing the right things to get the outcomes for kids? So our plan will be the hypothesis of what we do these things, we're going to have good outcomes for kids and then we're measuring that over time in, like you're saying, professional, thoughtful survey that's looking at answering the real questions that we have about student results.
You have to work, you have to have that survey coming from a neutral standpoint. You don't want to be either on a positive or a negative in those surveys because if you read in questions, you get the question that you're trying to, you know, you're trying to get the answer that you want. And so we really have to have us be why you have to have a professional group that comes in that really does these for a living and knows how to, to write them and knows how to write them and to administer them so that you can get really good data is garbage and garbage out. You know, if you, if they're poorly designed surveys, you're not going to get a good clear picture, so.
Yeah, and they sign and then you look at progress over time, sure the teachers do it with kids and all kinds of learning.
Exactly, that's what, that's what comes into it. I said, but it's also important to take that information and make the right decisions on it because companies I've worked for, they get answers, aha, I see, this is where we're falling down all the survey, these are the areas we can focus on. And then they do the wrong things and they exacerbate the situation that people are trying. So you've got to be able to really understand what the data is telling you and don't go down the wrong path and make it worse. So it is, it is an art, so.
So are we giving direction then to consider going down the path of looking into having a, an independent survey?
I would like to.
I mean, I'd be interested in hearing.
I would like to use that as part of, you know, what do we need focus on, on this district design? That's where I would like to, to get the data. I mean, we are getting, you know, focus groups and things and that's all driven internally, but I'd like to get a broader picture than just these, these focus groups.
Yeah, I think for me, I think it's important to have, like you're saying, a neutral body administering these things, administering a survey, providing this information that should be ranging from all of the stakeholders, including teachers, staff, parents. And, you know, I'd like to see that as, you know, if it's a part of that we're rolling into the strategic planning, that's the timing. But I'd be interested in seeing that as something that's going to be brought up in the, you know, in the future that we can possibly, that they're hiring, that's probably what I'd be interested in seeing that.
Yeah, because that's something your data that you're going to be able to use to put together your, your picture. And just how do you want to focus and how do you want to improve this district?
And there's all kinds of, like, we talk about surveys, there's, I guess, different components of this process, right? Because one component is designing the plan, right? So you're getting the, it's the, what are the mechanisms to get that input? You know, whether it's surveys, how they're administered to get good information, to have clarity of what the goals are. And then it's getting baseline and measuring, once the plan is being implemented, measuring against those other surveys over time in a thoughtful, comprehensive, neutral way so that you're getting good data so you can make the decisions. And so I don't think it's just like, you know, there's not just one survey that solves all the, you know, it's, it's like, how do we, how do we have goals and work toward them? Using data and information.
I'm just interested in hearing some focus groups and some meetings have already been taking place and what changes to the plan, to the old plan have we been hearing about from one of those group members?
That's ongoing. So that is something that we're always doing, meeting with focus groups and, and so we will be, I mean, it's literally happening right now at this point of the year as we think about moving into the next school year. But I'll give you an example of one of the focus groups I talked about earlier was the C plus Invitational that was actually a group and then came back to the C plus Advisory. So they're thinking about actual C plus and the value of that, those experiences for children and one of the students telling us and what do we hear from parents during those focus groups? And then what is the advisory group that's made up of C plus teachers, teachers and principals telling us, so sorting through all of that so we can think. So that's one example of a topic or an area that they're, that we're getting information about right now that will have an impact now as we look through 2022, 2023 priority objectives.
Just one thing to add, I really liked that you were talking about the school site element of it. I think that there's so much power in a school site. And so as we're seeing, developing the strategic plan, having the same kinds of conversations all the way through the organization, each of the school sites and having that school site leadership and it's just great to hear from all of our amazing principals today and hear the nice words that you said and also just knowing that each of you are such strong leaders and that at your school sites, you'll be able to also participate in what is unique about your site and your teachers and your community and how can those goals be articulated and then, and then measure over time. So that's a really important part of this process. Okay, well, this is just the beginning of a conversation. So hopefully folks will continue to send their suggestions about how this all unfolds and we can all work together to, you know, make this strategic plan better. But I think it's been a great five years.
Excited to think about the next, the next one or whatever it ends up being. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item nine point one is board approval, resolution number 202212, approval of four first-class proposals for least least back services.
Thank you. President Harper, who's the board, I'm very competitive. So nine point one, we are requesting board approval of four request proposals for least back services. As you know, with our Delmar Hills School rebuild and our Sky School, we use the least back here in Memphis, this is bringing board resolution that will provide a form for us to request. So it's sort of the first step for us to then go out and request proposals as we look at bringing on builders and supports in the planning and then the construction of the Delmar Hills optimization.
Could you expand on what you said?
Least least back is a process that allows us to select the best value for the builder and bring them on in pre-construction phase. The benefits are by bringing them on in pre-construction phase, especially for example, modernization, where we're looking at physical phasing, we're having conversations about could we do two summers and do that whole build? Do we need to do some sort of phasing during the school year to have a builder who would actually be constructing it involve that conversation rather than just district staff and architects? We have a much clearer picture as to how that might go through. On top of it, the selection process allows us to make a best value selection rather than just the low bid. And what we found as we've done our research and as we've looked at this, is just doing low bid leads to change orders that build up from the low bid that you get, whereas with least least back, we're able to get to a price that will typically be guaranteed maximum and has contingencies in there and then we can come in, add a number of dollars and prices a little more surely as well.
Okay, no more questions. So what's your message after the resolution?
A little approval. One second.
A little favor.
A high one.
As opposed, okay, resolution has passed. Nine point two is board approval bid number 2122-09 Playground Devolution and Installation Project, Ashley Falls School and Carmel Del Mar.
Pull this into the nine, bring approval, just to highlight another one of the projects with our measuring dollars. We've talked a lot about those big projects, we've talked a lot about Delmar Heights, Silver Sky and Delmar Hills, but we are moving forward with Playground Devolution and Installation at Ashley Falls and Carmel Del Mar this summer. And we are in the process of planning for Oceaneur, Torrey Hills and Sage Canyon for the following summers that we can fill out our schools with modernized, updated playground equipment. So we are requesting approval to move forward with this portion. We have already, the board's already approved the purchase of the playground equipment that was actually on a piggyback bid, so we're able to purchase the equipment and now we have a group to actually do the removal and installation.
If approved, how long do you think it'll take you for it to install?
We would, we're, I think, doing it this summer.
So everything should be finished by summer. Great, okay, so the ones in Sycamore Ridge are fantastic, so. It's, I think, I think with people at Ashley Falls and Carmel Del Mar, that's something really to look forward to.
Sound a motion?
Yes, motion.
Is that second? Second. All given.
Fair.
Okay, early motion has passed. Okay, nine point three is board report facility updates.
Thank you. So this month for our facility updates, we will cover our demo, Delmar Hills is having modernization, Sky School, Summer High School rebuild. And we'll also speak a little bit about Series D projects that will then flow into seven point ones, we talk about Series D monitoring itself. Delmar Hills is having modernization. We are, as you know, we did previous community planning sessions in the beginning of this school year and the last school year. We've done initial geotechnical investigations, so they're compiling those final results and actually we're in and did borings at the sites over spring break, also did the site survey and visit over spring break, you know, about finishing the site survey. And we're starting to work on sequel process. There's also some investigation, it is an older school, so there's some things we're finding that they had to dig in to find certain documents with changes that happened with PSA and. And so we're still finishing and working on that schematic design. You need that initial schematic design to get an initial cost estimate so you can have some sure numbers and then be able to look at, do we need to go back and, or, you know, is it right on track? Is it a little bit high? We need to go back and talk about what are priorities? And so once we get that, we'll be able to come back and share a little more information on that. With Pacific Sky School, we continue to make great progress. We still anticipate its completion by November fifteenth, full site completion by January twenty twenty-three. And I'm still hopeful that we'll get that in a little bit earlier. I have two pictures to kind of highlight this month. So in our first couple of pictures, this is kindergarten. So we have the, the nano walls in that will kind of lead out to the play area. This is the outdoor area in between and so they've, it's, it's concrete, but it's stamped in a manner that makes it look more like a wood area. It'll have long lasting, but also gives it a nice look for the, the students and staff. This is the back of our M U R. You can see we're starting to have the trellises for the lunch area and they just poured asphalt on the back play area. So it's really starting to come together. We'll, we'll be seeing concrete's actually going in right now in the kindergarten area. It's kind of spreading around, we actually anticipate seeing some of the landscape being going in and more in that front area next couple of three weeks. So continue to make great progress. We also have, if you look at it from the top, this roof here in the east is actually pretty much covered. This is our kitchen, so we have the walk-in freezer and fridge are installed. This is the interior of the kitchen and then our exterior is making great progress. And I don't have a picture of it, but I saw it just down there today, the stop signs are installed. So I think they were installed within the last couple of days. I was a little worried, I've been communicating with the city and I hadn't gotten the date, but they just were there. So really lose to see that there before the, the school year started.
Yeah, I was going to say that Chris, that they were just installed a couple of days ago, or two or three days ago. And I wanted to say thanks to Ricky and to Joe, the top, for helping out.
I would be honored to refer you to the city.
Yeah, I was gonna, meant to email them, so.
Awesome, thanks.
Thank you.
Delmar Heights, we are continuing with, we started demo in March. We have our anticipated completion is May twenty twenty-three. We do have the ongoing litigation that is on appeal and the court of appeal. And we are still, you know, looking forward, kind of looking forward, keeping an eye on, looking forward to when that will happen. That's something that would likely happen sometime maybe in the summer. We, we don't have the date yet. There's also a litigation against the city of San Diego. And as you know, there was a hearing last week, attended, it was not in our favor. We argued with counsel, argued well on our behalf and it was not stated with its briefing and we continue to work a fight against that to, to allow the progress continue. So we'll update as we have more information on that. And we do have a time lapse video of our demo from Montcalvo. Lots been done in two months. We have these sixteen foot sound walls that were part of the mitigation measures from that relief debt, yeah, that we did. Those are actually down now and we have a whole lot of work, it's a lot of groundwork right now, but it's setting up for foundations to be laid and paths to be forged as we continue to work on that project. And then with our Series B bond projects, when we look to Series B, there will be funding that will help to support Delmar High School rebuild, some of the finishing touches on Pacific Sky School. Series B will fund the construction for Delmar Hills Academy Modernization and probably some of the final planning. And then the planning for Carl Delmar School's Modernization and likely some of the construction. And then finishing off the playground upgrades remaining sites, that we'll be continuing our classroom modernizations at all sites. And if you look closely at the details on Series B, we have included some potential funds for other projects in C and D just to give us the possibility, should something happen, you never knock, you may knock, but something that, that caused a hiccup in one project would be able to move another project forward. And so we'll look quickly at Series C and Series D. Series C, we would finish Carl Delmar, we'd be doing Ashley Falls Modernization and starting Sage Canyon. We continue with those classroom modernizations. And then Series D would see us finishing Sage Canyon and then working for Torrey Hills, Sycamore Ridge and Oceanair Schools Modernizations. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions before we have our, our decisions.
Just what are your timelines, I mean, it might be the next section, but for Series C and Series D, you then?
We generally anticipate them to be about three years and then the three years out. So we're looking at, you know, we, we're, should the board approve the Series B bond sale? Then twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-eight being sales for Series C and Series D.
I just want to ask if the, I can't remember, does the Delmar Hills Modernization include new playground modernization as well?
Yes, so that's part of what we are planning to do with Delmar Hills Modernization. We also are, there's some work on the field. We're looking at maybe doing even some, some field work this summer and maybe some minor improvements. We've had some continued concerns about overhauls and other things like that. So we are balancing those things too with our restricted payments and how we can make immediate impacts on some of the areas without having a negative impact because we're redoing something with the modernization.
Does that include new playground equipment as well?
Okay.
And then my other question is, that video is so cool. I know my kids love seeing it, it's on our website.
Sure, it kills the most.
Thank you. So let's move to ten point one, now I'll read the longest name of a resolution ever. So stand by. Ten point one, resolution of the Board of Trustees, the Delmar Union School District, authorizing the issuance and sale of the Delmar Union School District General Obligation Bonds, two thousand eighteen election, series twenty twenty-two B, in the principal amount of not to exceed sixty-four million dollars. Prescribing the terms of the bonds and their sale, approving form of such bonds, authorizing execution and delivery of a bond purchase agreement, authorizing the execution and delivery of a preliminary official statement and official statement for the bonds, authorizing execution of certain documents and agreements in connection with the issuance, sale and delivery of the bonds, making certain findings and determinations and taking related actions.
Thank you very much. We have here tonight with the Adam Bauer, our financial consulting on this. And we also have Rob Anzlo, legal counsel with Atkins and Anderson. And so I'm going to ask Adam to share a little bit on the background, some information on our finance plan. And then Rob's going to speak a little bit about the resolution itself.
Great, and thank you, and I'm very happy to be here for your second series of what we rejected the sixty-four million. And on this first slide, that red, as I described to you in the past, that the municipal market data, that is a perfect credit, AAA credit like yourself, and how that will price over time. And so we have the red line represents the thirty-year maturity and the blue line represents the ten-year maturity. So investors require higher even over the long term, that's why the red line is typically above the blue line. Now, if you go to about two-thirds to the, two-thirds, throwing it left, two-thirds over, you get to that downward slope and then it spikes up. That downward slope is when we issue our last series bonds, that was perfect. And then we have COVID nineteen and interest rates spiked, investors sold, we called it the sell everything rally. They sold stocks, they sold oil, they sold bonds. Not quite sure where they put the money. But then, once the Fed dropped rates back to zero, the ten-year treasury, the three-year treasury dropped, they put money back in things like bonds and things like this and see a pretty steady, low interest rate environment. And so recently, and that's partly what we're seeing, is the first quarter of two thousand twenty-two hasn't seen the highest increases in rates in any one quarter ever. And that, everything moves that way now, so the financial data is available so much quicker than it used to be. So we feel like we're always saying ever because it's new, new highs, new lows are always seems to reach pretty quickly. And it's what we experienced in the first quarter of two thousand twenty-two. And so the more we get in the market and we get these bonds priced and try to lock in, that's something close to where you were in two thousand nineteen. We kind of slide over to that October timeframe. You can see that we had several months where it still went down and then it came up in that March timeframe. So we're still in a good environment, we just aren't as good as we have in the last two years. On our next slide, that chart to the far left, all these slides that I showed you before, and I've just updated data. That chart to the far left, interest rates are on the vertical axis and then years are at the horizontal axis. Those blue bars represent the range of the interest rate that M and D have been at going back to two thousand five. That red line represents where it was as of October agenda deadline. And so you can see we're kind of right in the middle for most years, which means we're issuing about an average interest rate environment. So I want to kind of get to why I think they've changed so much. One is we've all heard of inflation, there's a lot of uncertainty, then there's uncertainty rates go up. Ukraine certainly has introduced, I don't want to do that. But the heart of it is right here, that bottom chart, and that, that bottom chart is the majority of the bonds are bought by mutual funds. And that, those green lines represent weeks that we've had inflows into those mutual funds. The red line represents money out. So remember I mentioned that sell-in rally? That's that huge red line to the left. Now, you always are right when you see green, a lot of inflows. And then you see those outflows, those red lines to the near far right side. And then we have seen a significant amount of outflows into missile bond funds. So investors that might buy this are also, they sell the bonds. So they're millions, they're saying they're a group of investors that said they want to have their funds. And so now they haven't redeemed those, they sell bonds and then still work this one in the mix. So how does that all work out so we still have relatively low rates? Is that we've had a very low borrowing level in two thousand twenty-two. So there hasn't been that many things for investors to buy. And so rates have gone up, but not too much. So now, looking here has assessed value, one of the things we caution on is always being conservative in our projections. And it's a good thing that we have because your assessed value has not increased as much as it has historically. In two thousand twenty-one, we saw the increase of three point five eight and two thousand twenty-two, two point five six. But your tender average is four point nine zero. So I think that you definitely experienced the economic positive things that other eight areas have. I just want to think you had a turnover in homes, that other areas have. And so maybe that will change with this next A D that comes out in about two months. But today, as far as the assessed value is on the accessible, you haven't seen that increase that a lot of other areas have. But it's fine, you built your program with anticipating things like this. And then so as a reminder, your bond program pass is sixty-one point one four percent. That's considered a very high asset rate. We issued that first series and you see about one hundred fifty million remain. There were sixty-four million we're looking at today and we have a tax rate of twenty-nine point two five. We've also committed and intend to only issue current interest bonds, being the new no capital appreciation bonds. Put a lot of numbers on the stage, but really trying to, I think really what we're trying to get at is that project fund sixty-three point one five. And then you can see the other costs associated with the transaction, the debtors and essentially funds and interest until about two thousand twenty-three, wrapped around your other series bonds. So there's a question about the next series of bonds. And so you can see, as, as we've heard that every, every three years, so we have the next series we're planning for in two thousand twenty-five and then a series after that in two thousand twenty-eight. Each time we issue bonds, we'll monitor where assessed values can end up and where rates are making adjustments. But here you can see that series of two thousand twenty-two B, we're looking at sixty-four hundred. So I wanted to talk about the rating for a moment. First of all, you, you received a AAA, that's the highest rating you can get. And just to kind of go back a few years, when your superintendent said, Adam, I want AAA. I am trying to do the caution, you know, let's manage expectations. I talked about flat double A and then I think before the analysts could even finish telling us the rating, Holly told me, Steve, I told you so. So you received AAA, you maintained it, so that, that's a really important. When we did your last series of bonds, it was important to have a AAA, but as far as the financial markets were concerned, it didn't make that much of a difference. Investors weren't that concerned of the difference between double A and AAA. But today it matters, credit spreads have widened significantly. And so that maintaining that AAA is going to save your taxpayers money. So typically, what they radiance like analysts say is factors that can lead to an upgrade. And this says NA, because you're at your highest. So factors that can lead to a downgrade, that is a deterioration reserves. And if we, if we leverage the district more than we have shown them in the presentation. So we show them geo-bonds, we don't show them things like COPs or disruptive bonds. We don't show another authorization later in here while we're doing this one. With the plan that we have in place now, as long as those reserves are maintained, they feel confident they can do a stable rating. And so now we'll get into our last slide and we've seen the rating, we have the item before you. You can see the schedule a little bit compressed compared to what we saw last time. The county changed their program, we no longer have to go to, go through them and get their approval. We just go, go, the district approves it and then you're allowed to go to your bonds. And so we hope the price may third. We want to be careful here, we have a Fed meeting coming up. I think you've heard about fifty or seventy-five basis points or nine increases in two thousand twenty-two. We need to monitor where we are in the market, but that's our plan right now, but we'll want some flexibility there. If we're able to achieve that pricing date, we build a close on or around May twenty-fifth. So now I think all, are the questions for me before I turn it over to Rob Anzlo?
Okay, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We have members of the board, secret gentleman with the audience, my name is Robert Anzlo, I'm partner with Atkins Anderson, under District Bond Counsel and Head of Information and Leadership. What you have before you is a resolution that authorizes the raise actions to issue Series B bonds on the terms that Adam described. It sets out maximum parameters in terms of interest rates, which are very conservative, as Adam said. All of the parameters included in the resolution are very conservative. Bonds are being issued only as current interest bonds and not as capital appreciation bonds, so there's no chaos involved in this transaction. As Adam said, we, the county has already adopted a resolution authorizing us to go forward. So I'm here to get started on one of the particular items. This morning, the county changed its capacity for resup to paying agents. Normally, the county would pay out the money for your bonds. The county is getting out of that business and is assigned US Bank to being the paying agent. So you have in front of you minor changes to the resolution. So we would note to the board when the motion is made for the resolution that it be made with that change in mind. And I'm here to answer any other questions you might have with regard to resolution or anything else that you can answer. If not, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I've got any other questions, Friday? Okay, then I will need a motion to approve the issuance and sale of the Delmar Union School District General Obligation Bond, two thousand eighteen election, series twenty twenty-two B.
With the inclusion of the new language.
Yes, with the inclusion of the language. Okay, thank you, Doug, is that second?
Full second.
Okay, a little favor.
Aye, aye.
The motion to approve the issuance and sale of the Delmar Union School District General Obligation Bonds, two thousand eighteen election, series twenty twenty-two B, passed. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, your honor.
Thanks for, thanks for standing up with us. Okay, ten point two is board review, receive and file measure M M to the City's Oversight Committee, two thousand twenty-one annual report.
Thank you, Jen, I'll remember the board. So the City's Oversight Committee, our City's Oversight Committee continues to meet about quarterly, four to five times a year. We have really exceptional group that has been asking good questions. They, we go through the budgets, the finances, how things are being spent. And we've now been able to get them out and do some site visits and stuff with it. Annually, the City's Oversight Committee does an annual report. And so the annual report is before the board for review. And this really is something that they do with an annual basis and then we just bring it before the board for your, your review and to receive and then we just, we file this as part of our documentation with the C O C. No actions required, but I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Okay, no questions, thank you very much for managing the chat process. Eleven point one is board approval, resolution number twenty-two ten, final notice of layout, classified employees, reduction in force due to lack of funds and or lack of need.
If you need questions, help, members of the board, Dr. O'Gorman. What I bring before you today is asking for approval to issue our final layout notices for our permanent classified employees in the designated classes that I'll be providing. As a reminder, affected January first, two thousand twenty-two, the changes in Assembly Bill four thirty-eight, they changed the classified layout process and the dates for permanent classified employees. permanent classified employees. Permanent employees may only be laid off for the following school year and they must be given a preliminary notice in March of fifteen. And previously, we were able to notify employees up to with a sixty-day notice at any time during the school year. Now, school districts are required to issue a preliminary notice by March fifteen. Our issues a reminder, our education code it outlines two reasons why employees are able to be laid off, either for a lack of work or a lack of funds. And this layout is due to a lack of work. In February, the board approved resolution two zero two two oh four, which authorized the issuance of preliminary layout notices to employee groups who were listed on the resolution. And by continuing to analyze our district to ensure that we're supporting our students, our site, our district needs, what I bring forward today with item eleven point one is asking for the resolution in order to offer final or to issue final layout notices. So the resolution that's being brought forth identifies the positions that we do not have the work to work for this school year. So the positions being brought forward are child nutrition ser, uh, trial, excuse me, child nutrition service assistants. Those are two, two-hour positions. We are currently in the process of selecting a vendor to operate out of our district kitchen and being able to take over that facility in January. And that vendor most likely will be providing their own employees. So this means we will not have the work certain, for sure, in order to necessitate two permanent CNS workers for the entirety of the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. Next is one occupational therapist. We do not have work to necessitate a total of four occupational therapist positions. A typical caseload for an occupational therapist is sixty students. Next year, we will be in end school year with about a hundred and twenty-three students requiring OT services. We do not have the work to support yours and necessitate four occupational therapists. And then last week, the coordinator of education in, excuse me, in information technology. Looking at the needs of our technology department, we've identified the need to have a chief technology officer position to lead the department's work. With the creation of this new position, we do not have the work and we need to continue to support a, both a chief technology officer and a coordinator of technology. And then the last week, the classification of the behavior support interventionist has been removed from this list of staff for a meaningful gap. So happy to answer any questions?
Is there a question?
Yeah, I just had a question. So going down the list, the child nutrition service assistant assistants, maybe could be hired by the real company that we're contracting with? Is that a possibility for them or find another role within the district?
Absolutely. I, I went with each of them and that is exactly our conversation. We know that, we know we will have some options for the gap period that we've been talking about from August and still December. And so we'll be looking for opportunities to continue to use them on those, that short-term period. And then once we identify our lenders, we're having conversations with our employees to find out if they could perhaps, it's recognizing that there's a staffing shortage and seeing whether or not these people could be, to be possibly picked up by this other company or if there is an opportunity to have the work. So additionally, Catherine, if not, we also are going to continue to work with our employees to find additional things for them.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two ten?
I will move to approve the resolution.
Thank you, is there a second?
One question. If we do find a need, I propose to make some in the head code that eligible for reemployment for a period of three, nine months, if there's a need that arises.
Absolutely. They retain reemployment rights and at any point if there is a need to bring any of these individuals back, they retain the rights for thirteen months and they would have rights to those positions.
A second. Thank you, all here.
Aye.
All right. The motion is approved. Close the items. Twelve point one is board review, reminder of upcoming T N S D events in your agenda. Item twelve point two is board review, reminder of upcoming district, T N S D F and P T A events, also in the agenda. Twelve point three, the K E C meeting, which is coming back, the preliminary items for the May twenty twenty-two regular board meeting, which will be held at Ocean Air School.
Ocean Air.
Ocean Air, Mercer County. Okay. And then twelve point four is adjournment of the meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Adjourn.
Is there a second? Can all of us say something? Okay, all those in favor of adjourn the meeting?
Aye.
Aye, both. Okay. Meeting is adjourned at eight fifty-seven A M.